The zoning Board of Adjustment is about to come into session here. We have a welcome new member this evening, Ms. Kelly Nazarian. And if you'll -- Ms. Nazarian, please raise your right hand and Mr. Rubin will swear you in. Repeat after him, please.
Good evening. I'm going to start, there's going to be two votes. Both will start off with me starting the word "I", which you then repeat, and then you say your name after the word "I", and then you just follow along, repeat with whatever else I said. Is that okay?
You need to unmute yourself, Ms. Nazarian. There you go.
Sorry, got that.
That's okay.
All right, so.
Raise your right hand.
Raise your right hand, please. "I".
"I", Kelly.
Say your last name.
"I", Kelly Nazarian.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of New Jersey.
Of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will.
And that I will.
Bear true faith.
Bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And to the government.
And to the government.
Established in the United States.
Established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
All right, we're going to do another one. We're going to start off the same way, okay? "I".
"I", Kelly Nazarian.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
Of zoning Board of Adjustment member.
Of zoning Board of Adjustment member.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
You're welcome. Zoning Board of Adjustment of the Township of Bloomfield is now in session for the regular meeting of Thursday, October 7, 2021. Notice of the timetable, location, and agenda of this meeting, to the extent then known, was provided at least 48 hours prior to the commencement of this meeting in the following manner pursuant from provisions of Chapter 231 of the Law of 1975, also known as the Open Public Meetings Act I, by posting such notice on the Golden Board of the Municipal Building and II, by mailing such notices to the offices of the Independent President of Bloomfield Life and Star Ledger. Due to the ongoing pandemic and an effort to prevent further spread of COVID-19, this meeting will be held remotely. The public is invited to attend by accessing the meeting either by telephone or video link. The meeting will also be available for viewing on Channel 35 Comcast, Channel 30, Verizon, or by streaming live on Facebook or the township website www.bloomfieldtownshipnewjersey.com. The public is invited to participate via Zoom by accessing the website link according to the telephone number listed on the agenda. The meeting ID is 869-5066-3050. The passcode is 950524. If you would like to review an adaptation material or have any questions, please contact the Board Secretary Nicole Cessenza and cessa@bloomfieldtownshipnewjersey.com or telephone 973-680-4012. I'm worn out already. Ms. Cessenza, please call the board.
Okay. Ms. Brown?
Present.
Mr. Johnson?
Present.
Mr. Prince?
Here.
Mr. Balniki?
Here.
Mr. Wagner?
Present.
Ms. Nazarian?
Present.
Chairman Machowski?
Here.
So for the record, we have a new member also. He is not present, Mr. Cabrera. And Ms. Tolliver is supposed to be here. I will let everybody know when she signs on. Also, Ms. Hilaire is supposed to be here. I'll let everybody know if she signs on.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Brings us to item two of the Agenda Communications. We have communications from zoning board member Mr. Stivers. He submitted his resignation via email. He proposed of a new business enterprise that he's been involved in. It's taking up too much of his time to be able to devote time to the zoning work, so he's resigning effective October 1, 2021. May I have a motion to accept Mr. Stivers' resignation, please?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion.
Mr. Johnson moves. Is there a second?
I'll second it reluctantly.
Mr. Balniki, seconds. All in favor, please say "aye". Aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Hearing no one opposed, Mr. Stivers' resignation is accepted effective October 1, 2021. Ms. Cessenza, please inform the clerk, the mayor, and the council that we have a vacancy.
I have. I have.
Okay. That brings us to Resolutions. We have five resolutions, board. These are resolutions that memorialize action that this board has taken at a earlier meeting. These resolutions have been distributed to all board members in draft form in advance for review and for comment. And so with that in mind, I will read the first resolution. It's a resolution, the matter of the application of Louis Garcia and Caroline Torres for variance pursuant to NJSA 40:55D-70C, permitting the widening of a driveway accessible in one car attached garage accessory to a single-family dwelling and for a design waiver for the proximity of the driveways where the lot line property located at 675 East Passaic Avenue, Block 1143, Lot 50. Board, any discussion regarding this resolution? Hearing no one, may I have a motion to approve this resolution?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Mr. Wagner moves. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Johnson seconds. Call the board, please, Nicole.
Okay. Mr. Balniki?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Prince?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Chairman Machowski?
Yes.
Motion carries. Resolution is approved. The next resolution is a resolution, the matter of the application of Don Vabula and Michelle Vabula for front yard setback building coverage and lot coverage variance pursuant to NJSA 40:55D-70C, to permit the construction of a second-story addition, no open front porch, and a mudroom to extend a single-family dwelling property located at 44 Jacob Street, Block 30, Block 39. Any discussion regarding this resolution, board? No. Hearing no one, may I have a motion to approve resolution, please?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Balniki moves. Is there a second?
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Prince seconds. Please call the board.
Mr. Balniki?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Prince?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Chairman Machowski?
Yes.
Motion carries. The resolution is approved. And moving right along. The next resolution is a resolution, the matter of the application of Daniel A. Secchio and Joseph G. Secchio trustees for a building coverage and side yard setback variances pursuant to NJSA 40:55D-70C, permitting the construction of a one-story addition in the rear yard of a single-family dwelling property located at 337 Estes Avenue, Block 786, Lot 32. Board, discussion, please. Hearing no one, may I have a motion to approve this resolution?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Johnson moves. Is there a second?
No, second, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Prince seconds. Please call the board, Ms. Cessenza.
Okay, Mr. Balniki?
Yes.
Ms. Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Prince?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Chairman Machowski?
Yes.
Motion carries. The resolution is approved. The next resolution is a resolution, the matter of the application of George Lopez for variance pursuant to NJSA 40:55D-70C, plus front, rear, and side yard setback deviations for accessible building coverage and for an accessory building and a front yard, who authorized the construction of a two-car detached garage to replace a one-car garage, servicing a single-family dwelling at property located at 75 East Elmira Street, Block 542, Lot 21. Any discussion, board, regarding this resolution? Hearing no one, may I have a motion to approve this?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Prince moves. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Wagner, seconds. Please call the board.
Mr. Balniki?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Prince?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Chairman Machowski?
Yes.
Resolution carries. The motion carries. Resolution is approved. And that brings us to the last resolution, number five. I think I've got them all now. Resolution, the matter of the application of new singular wireless PCS LLC, AT&amp;T as applicant, and National Church Residence MS #6 Kinder Tower as owner, for minor site plan approval and a conditional use variance pursuant to NJSA 40:55D-70D3, permitting the installation of 16 wireless telecommunication antennas and four arrays related equipment cabinets, and an emergency generator on roof of an eight-story age restricted apartment building at property located at 1400 Hoover Avenue, Block 679, Lot 100. Any discussion, board? Hearing no one, may I have a motion to approve this application, please?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Balniki moves. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Johnson, please call the board, Ms. Cessenza.
Okay. Mr. Balniki?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Prince?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Chairman Machowski?
Yes.
Motion carries. Resolution is approved. Thank you, board. Moving right along minutes. We have two sets of minutes that are distributed in advance to the board for your review. I'll take the first set of minutes of the regular meeting of August 19, 2021. Board, any discussion regarding these minutes? Hearing no one, may I have a motion to approve the minutes of August 19, 2021?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Prince moves. Minutes, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Balniki, seconds. All in favor, please say "aye".
Aye.
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 Is there?
Aye.
Is there? Is there anyone opposed? Hearing no one opposed, the minutes of August 19, 2021 are approved. That brings us right to the minutes of September 9, 2021. Any discussion regarding these minutes, board? I hear no one. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of September 9?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Johnson moves. Is there a second?
I'll second it, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Prince, seconds. All in favor, please say "aye".
Aye.
Aye.
The regular opposed. I hear no one opposed, therefore the minutes of September 9, 2021 are approved as set. All right. That takes care of item two on the agenda. Moving along to item three. Upcoming applications to consider for review by the board's professional planner and/or the board's traffic engineer. And there's five tonight, board. The first one is 125 Broughton Avenue. 125 Broughton Avenue lies in the B2 zone. It's now a commercial building with a parking lot. And the applicant is proposing to create a two-story addition, placing four residential apartments over the commercial use on the ground floor, so it would be a three-story building. Four residences, one commercial use. And they're seeking conditional use variances and some bulk variances. So it's a D3 and some C variances. Discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. How many units was involved here, does it say?
Four dwelling units over one commercial unit. By putting a two-story addition on the existing structure.
I would recommend, given that this is upsizing the scale of the building, that we engage both the planning expert as well as the traffic experts.
This is a permitted use.
I'm sorry?
It's a permitted use. Conditionally permitted use. It's in the B2 zone, so residential over commercial is permitted.
But they're not meeting some of the conditions, so they wouldn't require conditional use variance.
Correct. But I just want to make sure that everyone understands that the theoretical concept of the development is permitted.
And for the conditional use variance, we would expect planning testimony from the applicant? Would we not institute a program?
Yeah, I mean, I'm addressing more the traffic issues. I'm not sure that the off-site traffic issues and counts on Broughton Avenue are necessary for this kind of an application. That's all.
Okay. Understood. That being said, then, I would expect that we could engage the planning experts without the traffic expert.
Other discussion, board?
I agree.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Anyone else?
I agree as well.
Thank you, Ms. Nazarian.
Just wanted to clarify, Mr. Chairman. Did we say we're not going to engage the traffic expert here?
That's what's on the table right now.
Okay, all right. I'm just looking on at the lot, and there's a very -- I don't know the lot lines specifically, but there's a large parking lot here. And not having the application in hand, it's a large amount of parking that's -- it looks utilized on Google Earth. And I don't know if that's going away or what the site plan is seeking to do, or if it's just going to be the same footprint of the existing building, but.
If I may, Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Mr. Nazarian.
The only parking lot that is part of the application is to the south of the property, not to the rear. That's a separate property.
Okay, thank you. That helps clarify.
On Google, you can't tell because it looks together, but when you see the plan, it's only the parking lot on the side of the building that's part of the application.
Okay, thank you. That's extremely helpful because there's a lot. Because I guess it's also probably part of Romeo's Bakery as well that's connected, that's on the south as well, so that's why I was concerned.
Right, that's a separate.
Okay, all right. Then I'm in complete agreement.
Any other discussion, board? I'll entertain a motion to engage the planner, then.
I'll make that motion. That we are initiating for the planner for 125 Broughton Avenue.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second. Ms. Ms. Brown?
Ms. Brown, seconds. Call the board, please.
Ms. Brown?
Ms. Cessenza, call the board, please.
You're muted.
Sorry about that. Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Prince?
Yes.
Mr. Balniki?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Ms. Nazarian?
Yes.
Chairman Machowski?
Yes. Let Mr. Williams know that we need his assistance, please.
Okay.
And I just want to ask the board, has everyone received 125 Broughton Avenue, the application, please?
I recall receiving it.
Okay. Anyone else? Call.
I hope everyone received it because I only have my copy left.
And I think. I did not receive, but I rechecked and call I don't have.
All right, I can, we actually just got the plotter working between yesterday and today, the new plotter, so I can make you a copy.
Thank you.
No problem.
So that brings us to 35 Bloomfield Avenue. 35, I'm sorry, excuse me. 58 parentheses 34 Bloomfield Avenue. That's an odd one. 58 parentheses 34 Bloomfield Avenue. That's in the B2 zone. They're seeking a D3 conditional use variance for multi-family dwelling and a C variance for parking deficiencies. Discussion, board?
Mr. Chairman, I think this, even though it's a B2 zone, it's down on a very busy area of Bloomfield Avenue, okay? Entering Newark, and I would recommend having both our traffic and planner on this.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Balniki. Anyone else?
I agree.
And I would concur with Mr. Balniki as well.
Thank you, Mr. Prince.
I agree.
Anyone else?
It's a very tight location, and I'm concerned about that, so I would agree.
All right. May I have a motion to engage both the planner and the traffic engineer?
I'll make their motion.
Mr. Balniki moves. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Johnson, seconds. Please call the board.
Okay. Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Prince?
Yes.
Mr. Balniki?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Ms. Nazarian?
Yes.
Chairman Machowski?
Yes. Motion carries. Please let the engineer, traffic engineer, and planner know that we need their assistance, Nicole.
You got it.
And moving right along. 25 Lawrence Street. 25 Lawrence Street is in the R2A family zone, R2A. And the application requires a D1 variance for 14 residential units, 14 units, and a D4 FL variance and various C variances.
Sounds to me like entity variance would have to be included with that. I don't know how it could be. It's in the R1A zone, we want 14 units.
I didn't see that listed, but it's possible.
I haven't reviewed it yet, but I think it must be an entity variance also. It's an R2B zone.
All right.
Chair.
Okay. I thought it was R2A, but that's all right. We'll just have to be sure that the notice is correct. Discussion, board?
Mr. Chairman, given the size of this project and the addition of so many units, I would encourage that we engage both a planner and a traffic expert.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Anyone else?
I would agree concerning the size of the street. Would have to concurs as well.
Thank you, Mr. Prince. Anyone else?
I agree with both Mr. Prince and Mr. Johnson completely on this.
All right. And give us the Balniki. Anyone else?
I agree with all my colleagues as well, the entity. There's a concern.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. I'll entertain a motion and engage the engineer and the planner both.
I'll make that. Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Johnson moves. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Brown, seconds. Call the board, please.
Okay. Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Prince?
Yes.
Mr. Balniki?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Ms. Nazarian? Chairman Machowski?
Yes.
She's muted.
I know. I don't know, I know she was at a doctor's office. Ms. Nazarian?
She's in an emergency room.
Yeah, she might. Oh, there she is.
Hi, yes. I'm just, I'm put on.
All right. You're totally breaking up, but we didn't hear you.
I'm sorry. I'm about to not be able to talk at the moment because I'm in an emergency dentist appointment.
Not a problem.
I apologize. Thank you.
Yeah? So motion carries. Can let the engineer and the planner know, Ms. Cessenza, that we need them.
Okay.
That brings us to the last upcoming application, 29 Park Street. 29 Park Street is in the R1B zone. And the proposal is for converting a one-family residence to a two-family residence.
Is 233 not on the agenda tonight? Is 233 Broughton Avenue not on the agenda tonight?
We're not doing that. We haven't even gotten.
We haven't even gotten there yet, right.
Okay, so just be patient with us.
My goodness.
We're getting the Flumneri, the Flumneris.
I don't see a 233 Broughton at all.
You're right. It's 231 Broughton Avenue, Chairman.
All right, 231 Broughton is.
Is on the agenda.
Right now, it's on the agenda, second item.
All they have to do is look it up.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, regarding that right hand, is Park Street in the historic district?
That I go.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, it is not. It's across the street from the high school.
Okay, thank you.
It's outside of the, it's outside of the historic district.
Well, given the fact that it is near the high school, one-family to two-family. What is their variance that they're seeking, Mr. Chairman?
D1.
D1.
It's a D1.
So I recommend that we secure a planner for that.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else? Any other discussion, board?
Mr. Chairman, given the location of this near the high school and the number of issues that we've already had in that particular area, I would agree with my colleague, Ms. Brown.
All right, thank you. Anyone else?
Question for my colleague. Should we consider a traffic engineer since parking is of such a deficit in that area?
The number of parking, increased parking.
The minimum.
One, two, and four, that kind of.
I understand. Thank you, Mr. Rubin. That's an excellent point, just airing my thoughts.
And I didn't see any mention of a parking variance, so that remains to be seen. All right, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move to secure the planning expert.
All right. Ms. Brown moves. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Who did I hear first?
Mr. Prince. He's retired.
Mr. Prince. Mr. Prince, seconds. All the board, please, Ms. Cessenza.
Okay, Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Prince?
Yes.
Mr. Balniki?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Chairman Machowski?
Yes. Motion carries. Please let Mr. Williams know we need an issue on this.
Okay.
And with that, we'll finish with old business.
Business.
And under new business is, I want to find out if the 65 Park is ready to proceed. I know that the council, council for 65 Park asks that it be slid down the agenda to later times at day. Is there a?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, Michael Rubin, before we even go there.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, Michael Rubin, before we even go there, um, by my count, we currently only have five eligible members to vote on this application, uh, which is a D one variance. Mrs. Bellnicki procures, and Ms. Nazarian has not, um, participated previously.
And correct, Ms. Hiller and Ms. Oliver were both supposed to be here, so I don't want Mr. Viteri to think I gave him incorrect information. We had two members that were supposed to be here that are not.
Now, there are seven, but right now we only have five.
Correct.
It's possible they will be here if they're supposed to be, and it may very well that that would influence discussion over where we should put them on the agenda. That's the only reason I brought it up.
Thanks, Mr. Rubin, thanks, Mr. Chairman. Uh, yeah, we had some correspondence with Mr. Harrison, the objector's attorney earlier today, and uh, I think there was some dialogue about a special meeting on October twentieth. Uh, Mr. Harrison isn't able to make that meeting. And as it turns out, our professionals work and flicked it out later on in the evening tonight, so regrettably, we, and now that I'm learning that we only have five members, we would probably have done this anyway, but, uh, regretfully, we'll have to try to find a date that is agreeable to Mr. Harrison, the board and the applicant.
All right, uh, November eighteenth is a date that works for everyone on our side. It's Phil Harrison of the Applicatorial Board.
Hello, Mr. Harrison.
Hi, Mr. Rubin, how are you?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just for clarity, our discussion meeting is the twenty-second?
The twentieth.
The twentieth?
Two oh, yeah, two oh.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, remains to be seen if we're having that meeting or not, depending on whether anything moves to the special meeting. Right now, there's something on the table. So we do have a regular meeting on November eighteenth?
Looks like our group is good for November eighteenth, if Mr. Harrison is good.
We ever good for that date?
Okay. So you, you just carry that without your notice, that would be great.
All right, any discussion board? All right, uh, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn, uh, sixty-five Park Avenue to the regular meeting of November eighteenth at seven P M. No further notice being required.
I'll make the motion.
Ms. Brown moves it. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Johnson seconds, um, I would just want to briefly ask you to pull the vote. Is there any member of the public here regarding sixty-five Park Avenue?
Yes, yes.
All right, sir, we're adjourning this to November eighteenth, and no further notice is required because the announcement I'm making tonight is a legal notice that is needed under law.
Seven P M. Seven P M. Thank you. Thank you.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Anyone opposed? Hear no one oppose sixty-five Park Avenue is adjourned to the regular meeting of November eighteenth at seven P M.
Uh, Nicole?
Uh huh.
Perhaps you should have, you could have a conversation with Mrs. Nazarian about the process of her being eligible to vote, because when people, that we have an extra person between them.
That's fine, that's fine, it's, you know, it doesn't help when people don't show up last minute, though, quite frankly.
It's your fault, though, it's not your fault, but the more people we have, the better cover we have.
Okay.
Thanks.
No problem.
All right.
Mr. Chairman.
Who was that?
Mr. Chairman, this is Joe Fischinger, report will continue. That is the only application I was here for unless you need me for anything else. I mean, all in the name.
All right, Mr. Fischinger, unless you're, whether you're listening to the zone or meetings, uh, you're welcome to stay, but otherwise, have a good night.
All right, thank you, good night.
Good night, Mr. Fischinger.
You're welcome, bye. All right, was there someone else who wished, wished to speak? I thought I heard another voice.
No, I believe that was Ms. Nazarian telling us that she was, she was back.
Oh, good. Hopefully the procedure was not too painful. That brings us along to old business, item four B. Item four B is the application Charles, Charbel Sulte as applicant and owner for a use variance, bulk variances and any such other reliquists may be required from the zoning where it's attached with Bloomfield to convert a one-family dwelling into a two-family dwelling in a residential, one-family R one A zone, premises known as MAP thirty-three block nine one nine, lot sixty, better known as two thirty-one Browton Avenue.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, Councilman Robert Cassillon, I have been recently hired with regard to this matter. Subjective to being hired, I had a meeting with my client and the experts, and made a few recommendations, which have not yet been accomplished, therefore, I would like the opportunity to have this meeting adjourned to the next regularly scheduled meeting of the board, or if you're looking for an adjournment to, I believe you said, November twentieth, that would be fine with me.
All right, Mr. Cassillon, the choice is, we have a special meeting with nothing else on, on October twentieth, Wednesday, October twentieth.
I will be, I will not be ready with my changes for that.
All right. All right, so then, November eighteenth is the next regularly scheduled meeting, exactly.
Then I would request that I be adjourned to that meeting, I'll waive any constraints and get you with this application.
All right, thank you, Mr. Cassillon.
No new notice, Mr. Cassillon?
Please, if the notice is satisfactory, get out and do it. I assume the notice is satisfactory, move it on. So yes, I would like to have no further notice, uh, adjourned to that date at the seven P M.
All right, was, is there any member of the public regarding, is there any member of the public on the line tonight regarding two thirty-one Browning Avenue?
There's a number of people on for that right now.
Yes, there are.
All right, this is being adjourned to the regular meeting of November eighteenth at seven P M. And my announcement tonight, at this open public meeting is meets the legal requirement, so there will be no further notice. In other words, you won't receive another letter in the mail, and it won't be published in the newspaper. This is a notice. Uh, is that that clear?
So that the meeting is being adjourned to November eighteenth at seven P M?
The application is being adjourned to the meeting on November eighteenth at seven P M.
Great.
And this is the notice. Thank you. Anyone else?
And how many times does this happen? Is, is there?
Many times.
Many times, thank you.
Uh, more times than I really want to think of it. Very typical, very, very typical.
For, for the record, Mr. Chairman, I was very recently engaged in this matter.
Of course, Mr. Cassillon.
I have the application.
I understand, sorry, Mr. Cassillon. All right.
That girl, she can party one day.
Party, yeah, how's that?
Any discussion board? Hearing no one, may I have a motion, please, to adjourn two thirty-one Browning Avenue to the regular meeting of November eighteenth, twenty twenty-one, at seven P M, with no further notice being required.
So, move, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Prince, I heard first, moves it, is there a second? Mr. Bellnicki seconds it?
Second.
Looks like. Uh, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Hear anyone opposed? I hear no one opposed, two thirty-one Browning Avenue is adjourned to the regular meeting of November eighteenth at seven P M, no further notice is required.
Okay.
All right. Moving right along, does anyone need a break, or should we keep going? Keep going. Keep going, okay. That brings us to old business. Uh, four C. It's the application of Charles Housing LLC as applicant and owner for a use variance, bulk variances and any such other reliquists may be required from zoning where it's attached with Bloomfield to convert a one-family dwelling into a two-family dwelling in a residential, one-family R one A zone, premises known as MAP thirty-seven block ten twenty-one, lot two, better known as three eighty-three dash three eighty-seven Browning Avenue.
Mr. Chairman, I, I represent the applicant in this matter, and I will proceed on this one.
All right, um, and Nicole, remind me, did we engage the planner or the traffic experts?
Uh.
Obviously not the traffic.
No, I believe we did, yeah, the planner.
All right, very good.
Yep.
So, uh, having read the, uh, the notice, Mr. Cassillon, please proceed.
Chairman, members of the board, as you know, Councilman Robert Cassillon, firm is Cassillon Delaco, five twenty-four Union Avenue, Delaware. I represent the applicant in this matter, Charles Housing LLC. My client is the owner of three eighty-seven Browton Avenue. This is an application to convert a one-family home located in R one A district into a two-family dwelling. A D one use variance and a D four F A R variance are being sought, as well as a number of bulk variances, most of which are pre-existing. My client bought some years back, I believe it was two thousand seventeen, under a temporary C C O, which required the owner to become an applicant and apply for this variance. The witnesses you'll hear from are Charles Lee of Charles Housing LLC, George Aizrak, the architect, and Thomas Ricky, the planner. I'd like to call my first witness, Charles Lee.
Yes, Mr. Cassillon, how are you? And members, uh, Chairman.
Hi, Mr. Lee, can you raise your right hand?
Morning. Yes.
Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Just state your name for the record.
My name is Charles Lee, I'm the, uh, managing member of Charles Housing LLC.
Thank you.
Mr. Lee, what's your, your personal home address?
Uh, one hundred sixty-four Baltimore Avenue, North Arlington, New Jersey, zero seven zero three one.
And is Charles Housing LLC the owner of three eighty-seven Browton Avenue?
Yes.
And when was that property purchased by that entity?
Uh, it was purchased, uh, in November of two thousand sixteen.
And would you briefly review the constituents of that purchase with the board and your constituents?
Yes, uh, what happened was, we, we were thinking it was a, a two-family, and when, before the purchase, the, uh, inspector from Bloomfield is Raymond, Mr. Raymond Ramos, and he informed us there was illegal two-family, then made us, uh, to, uh, agree to apply for the variance after the purchase.
And have you had it, had it on the second floor since the time of the purchase?
Uh, yes, uh.
Has the first floor remained vacant for more than three years?
Yes.
And could you just briefly tell the board what you're seeking approval to do?
Yeah, we wanted to do a two-family with the two, uh, two-bedroom, one bathroom on the second floor and one studio on the first floor.
I have no further questions, as witness, Mr. Chairman, obviously the architect will give much greater detail, and the planner will discuss the issues involved.
The board, questions for this witness, please.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Ms. Brown.
Uh, just a, uh, good, good evening, thank you for coming to speak with us. My question is, I think I heard from your opening statement that, uh, Mr. Cassillon said that you were required to come, so you bought the property knowing it was a single family, is that correct?
Uh, actually, we thought it was a two-family, but, you know, as Mr. Ramos told us, it was illegal because the previous owner did the conversion to two-family, but she did not get the, uh, the approval from the board. So that was the start.
Ms. Brown, I think, if I clarify, he entered into a contract that he was a two-family, I believe, but before the closing took place, he was advised by Mr. Marucci's office that it was illegal one-family, not illegal two-family, and the C C O reflected that and said he was required to apply for a variance for the two-family. If that clarifies.
Thank you, this, okay, but prior to sale, he was notified that it was a single family, that's all, all right, thank you.
Any other questions, board?
Well, one more quick question, what is the, what is the proposed first floor unit?
If I could have you wait until the architect.
The architect, no problem, okay.
Give you better details.
Mr. Chairman, um, I do have one quick question.
Go ahead.
To the applicant, um, good evening, um, do I understand, uh, in terms of the timeline, that the property was purchased in twenty sixteen? Is that correct?
November twenty sixteen.
Twenty sixteen?
Yeah, November twenty sixteen.
So it, by now, it's almost five years then, that, that somebody has, yourself or somebody has lived in the property as a single family, is that correct?
Uh, yes, I should say so, because the second floor was rented to different people, and the first floor was taken, of course, more than three and a half years.
Okay, so it's used for the last, since twenty sixteen, since the purchase has been as a single family, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Johnson, I think there might have been a tenant in there when he first bought, but for the last three and a half years, it's been used as a single family.
Thank you for that clarification.
Go ahead, Mr. Lee.
Just to piggyback on the commissioner's question, slightly different twist, Mr. Lee, can you tell us how long it was tenanted as a two-family home? If you're able to answer that question.
Yeah, we did like for, um, one year, like in, uh, two thousand seventeen, then the first, uh, tenant moved out in January of two thousand eighteen, and never again we had any tenants on the first floor, so it was vacant.
And can you add any knowledge about how long prior to your purchasing was used as a two-family, if you can answer?
I don't know, actually.
Okay.
It might be like four years before I purchased, then convert to a two-family, but I don't know if there's a tenant or, no, no knowledge of it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Other questions, board? Is there any member of the public who has a question for this witness?
Yes.
State your name and address and ask your question, please.
My name is Joy Harris, and I'm a resident of three eighty-one and a dated property on Browning Avenue.
Okay.
Um, just a point of clarification, I've been here for forty-nine years, and prior to Mr. Lee purchasing the property, it was owned by a single individual, and it was never used as a two-family, it was a mother and daughter. So that's a point of clarification for the record.
Okay, just a point of clarification, that you can be seen later on if I test the, um, you're not sworn right now. So, what you witnessed is regarding to how the house is used, that'll come later, you'll be sworn in and they make any statement you wish. So this time right now is just questions for Mr. Lee only.
Okay, my first question is, Mr. Lee going to reside in the property as the owner? Or is this going to continue to be a, a rental property?
Uh, after the conversion, I will be residing on the first floor myself, the second floor will be rented.
Okay, my second question is, are there going to be any modifications to the property to maintain its appearance?
If I could, Miss Harris, the architect is better able to review that, and he will in detail review the modifications to the property.
That's perfect.
The next witness.
My next, uh, thank you, my next question is, uh, are there going to be any businesses allowed to be run out of this property?
I don't think so.
Ab, Miss Harris, absolutely not, it's not illegal to run a business, because an application used as a two-family or residence-owned.
Thank you. Is now or later, I'm sworn in, the time to say that the prior tenant was running, running business, a auto mechanic business out of the property.
Later after you're sworn in, please.
Okay.
Any other questions for this witness? Anyone?
Yes, is Mr. Lee going to be maintaining the property in terms of landscaping?
Yes.
Is that a? How frequently for him?
As, as regularly, uh, attend, like twice, uh, I mean, two weeks a time to cut the grass, and, uh, remove the snow, that kind of things, yeah, just regular maintenance. I, I, yeah, I, I saw the previous tenant had a, a car, you know, he did not say, you know, it's a business, I, I saw like a used car on, on the, on the parking space, so I, I didn't know he, I didn't know he was running a business.
Okay, that's fine, but that's okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so those are, those are, uh, that's the end of my questions for right now.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? Any other questions?
I have one more question, I have one more question.
All right, thank you. Go ahead.
To the applicant, you're saying that you're going to reside on the first floor, that you're currently living, I might have misheard this, did you say Elizabeth?
No, I'm living in North Arlington right now, I'm planning to sell the house. I'm planning to sell the house, and then live in the Brooklyn Avenue herself.
You're going to sell the other property, okay, thank you, and the second question is, do you have other properties that you own for the LLC? Or is this the only one?
Yeah, we have more, we have some properties in Montclair under this LLC.
How many?
I have six Charles Street in Montclair. Maybe another one in Little Falls, because I have a few other companies on different properties, actually, there's one single family in Little Falls under the LLC.
And then the last question is, when did you apply for the zoning board to hear your case? I guess.
Oh, we started from 2017, March.
Oh, you did file it back then.
Yeah, yeah, we went back and...
Delayed.
Yeah, and then we stopped, and then COVID and all those things happened.
Of course, of course, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Or no one else, thank you, Mr. Lee.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to go on my next witness, Mr. Azrak.
Good evening.
Mr. Azrak, please, please, raise your right hand. Do you swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Just state your name for the record.
George Azrak Jr.
Mr. Azrak, give us your business address and your occupation.
My office is at 151 Washington Street in Bluefield. I've run a architectural concern for 15 years now, and I've been an architect for over 35 years, having graduated at the University of Texas in 1984.
Are you a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey?
Yes, I am.
Are you a member of any society, professional groups, connected to your work?
No.
And you've got to provide previous, whether it's only boards or planning boards?
Yes, I have.
Except that as an expert, I need you in every indication.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I submit that Mr. Azrak is qualified as an expert in the field of architecture.
Any discussion, board? Board will accept Mr. Azrak as an expert in architecture.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Azrak, would you describe the existing site?
The site has a two-story wood-framed house on top of a masonry foundation, the site is relatively flat, and there's a deck, an existing deck out in the backyard, and there's a small 10-by-20 basement holding mechanical equipment, you know, below grade. The framed house has a masonry veneer, and a pitched roof with wood-framed siding. There's some existing landscaping along the back, as a bumper, and it's a little unruly, and the plan is to get that cleaned up. There's also one street tree, right in some shade, and that pretty much encapsulates the building as it exists now.
Are there any alterations or additions planned to be made to the structure should this application be approved?
The, we're going to provide a small extension to the garage in order to house two cars. It's a four-foot by 20-foot addition, one-story, that will be on the front of the building.
And would you review the changes made to the plan subsequent to the initial submission, and what there is on the revised plan that was submitted, different from the initial submission?
Yes, the drawings, in particular PB2.
George, I don't mean to interrupt here, I can share my screen if you want, so the board members can see, I have the plans up now.
Please, Tom, if you would.
Sure, I'm doing that now. George, if you want to just let me know when to flip, I'd be happy to kind of scroll through this, let me know when everyone can see.
Mr. Chairman, that's my planner test line.
Sure. Alright, we see the first page.
Yeah, could you flip to the second page, please?
Absolutely.
So we are showing...
Excuse me, Michael Rude, do we need to mark these as day one? Is this, what's marked a full set of plans prepared by Mr. Azrak as a one?
Okay. The main change to this plan is landscaping was included. We provided a buffer in the front of bushes, and we were called for additional plants, especially where the house is relatively plain along the side yard, and then a few more to kind of enclose a backyard, a small tree and some small bushes, and maintain the existing bushes along the back property line to give some privacy to the existing deck.
And quick interruption, Mr. Azrak, what's the date on the plans you're referring to?
The date is November 14th, you know, the latest provision, September 14th, 21.
I don't think I have those in my packet, okay, thank you.
Are there, so this was one of the main changes, if we can go to PB3. The other changes were to change from a one-bedroom apartment and in the first-floor plan, which is on the right upper corner, it was an enclosed bedroom, but we opened it up to be a, so that this would be considered a studio apartment. And the other minor changes on this plan were to address the utilities, in particular, the electrical. So in the garage, there will be three meters, one for each apartment, and one for the management, the owner, and three electric panels on the opposite side of the wall, and all, you know, electric for each apartment will be separated, so if there were any problems, the tenant can access their panel and flip a circuit breaker if needed.
I have a quick question, were those plans sent, because the plans that we have, the ones that were sent as revised, say, architect, 16 copies of revised architectural plans prepared by George Azrak, architecture dated January 13, 2018, with the latest revision date of March 28, 2021.
Yeah, well, those are the ones I have.
Yeah, I don't have any, any plans dated September. So I mean, they could very well just be the same identical plans, but knowing that there's a different revision date, I just want to make it clear that I'm going to need a copy of these.
I am too. You know, is there a revision number four that you're reading off of?
Yes.
Do you have a revision number four, because we only have plans that show true revisions.
Yeah, I don't have any other plans.
Right. The call if I might, my records show Michael sent in, and I'm sorry if they were not received.
The ones via email?
No, mailed in September 22, I assume email also with that.
Yeah, but that letter shows that the latest revision date for those plans from March 28.
Right, right.
That is correct.
Not September, not September.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, it's Anthony Ryan. It seems that Mr. Azrak didn't put a revision date on each sheet. He only revised whatever sheets he revised, because we do have those plans, but the first sheet is only revised to March 28, March 28, 2021. But PB3, it is revised to September 14, he didn't revise every sheet.
Oh, okay.
Correct, Mr. Azrak?
Yes, sorry for that confusion, but it would be confusing if I put a revision date on a drawing that didn't get revised, but I see that it still probably would have been necessary just for firing.
Yeah, because the cover letter says March 28.
And just...
I mean, you'll recall, that's why Michael has to write March 28, you might look at the face page, obviously.
Right, but this leads you to your point, and the reason I first asked about the date is, when I look at my set, which maybe I didn't get the latest set, but if you go to PB2, there are, there's no landscaping on my PB2, nor is there any bubble markup or notes on my PB2.
I don't have landscaping on PB2, my PB2 is revised to 9/14/21.
So I just don't have the latest set, so I may need a minority.
Alright.
If that's the case, I'll get them to you, George, so you have them for your file.
Thank you.
No problem.
That's what I have on my set also, George, you go. Chairman, okay, if we can continue with change, Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Yes, and we should then describe each sheet carefully and identify the rev level of data on every sheet that we look at to see.
Why don't you go back to PB2, if you would, and reflect that date?
PB2 should be revised on September 14, 2021.
Is that what it says on the document submitted?
What it says on the drawing submitted.
Right, fine, okay. Then let's go to PB3 and review the date on that one.
Okay. PB3's revision is revision number 3, dated September 14, 2021.
Thank you. Continue with your testimony, if you would, as to the changes that were made subsequent to the initial submission.
Changes on this were to clarify that this is going to be listed as a studio apartment, not a one-bedroom, and the wall between the bedroom and the kitchen is opened up, and it was made, uh, clear in a, in a chart down on the bottom right-hand corner that it's a studio apartment with a minimum required 550 square feet, and that what was being provided was a 567 square feet. That area does, obviously does not include the garages or the stairs, just what's associated with the apartment itself. Minor, minor additional changes were the, was to make the electrical utilities appropriate for two apartments and one owner, so the three, three each of meters and three electric panels. And then one minor change, just to move the wall slightly so that it added a little additional space into the apartment and took it away from the garage. Other than that, there were no other changes here.
Were there any changes in the exterior of the structure, especially?
Yes, if you turn to PB... Well, before we get there, let's just go to the next sheet, PB4, and that is the second-floor apartment, just in case there's any interest there. It shows a two-bedroom apartment with a kitchen, living room, and dining room. No changes were done, are being planned for this apartment at all. And going on to PB5.
Quick interruption, I don't want to mess up your flow, but just for record, the date for PB4 is July 2019?
7/1/19, yes, no changes were made since then. PB5 was dated 9/14/21, and the change is here, which is the third major change since the previous application, is to have the outside finishes more compatible with the existing siding, so where we have a stone veneer, the, then where we're having the addition on the garage, we are going to imitate that with a stucco finish and a applied pattern that looks like the stone veneer for the balance of the house. And that will happen on the three sides of the garage. If you move on to the last sheet, PB6, dated September 14, there's the inclusion of a stucco finish with a brick pattern on the enclosure of the stairs to the basement. That summarizes the changes. I did have one other note to make in the report of the planner. If you just go back to PB3, please, you just... PB3 shows the floor plan of the first floor, or ground floor, and the entrance into this studio apartment is a separate side entrance that goes directly into the apartment and has no connection to the stairs that go down to this mechanical room. I think the report thought, mentioned that they might have been part and parcel, and that... But that's just not the case, you know, there's a separation there.
And you've read, so there is no basement, then, is that correct?
I wouldn't call it a basement, I'd call it a mechanical room, there are no windows, it's entirely underground, it's just a concrete floor, masonry walls, 200 square feet of space filled with the heating system, hot water system, and no environmental conditioning of the space for any sort of adaptation.
Thank you, Mr. President, so there's, it's not, just to be clear, that's not indicated on the plan, but your testimony is that that space is as you described it?
That's correct.
Alright, and then, quick question, if I may, you mentioned the garage bump out, for lack of a better term, or addition on page PB5 or 6, I don't recall you offering testimony about the addition, and I could have been, I was looking through my pages.
The addition on PB5, we see as a one-story wood-framed four-foot by 20-foot addition, so that the depth of a car would have some room to close the door and navigate in the garage if needed. Two cars enclosed inside, and one for each tenant, with driveway space for a second car for each tenant.
And that addition creates a driveway length of, or is that a different witness? How, what were the driveway with the active usage?
The driveway length varies because the building is not parallel to the front property line, and a measurement taken from the center of the, you know, from the center of a car, if it were to pull out, would be 20 feet from the face of the garage to the property line in the shorter dimension. The second car, which is on the, on the right, would have 24 feet between the front of the garage and the property line. That's, if that's measured down the center of the car. That's, if that's measured down the center of the car. Thank you. And, um, you know, just, um, in, I think in, to address the concern of, um, the, um, what we're going to hear, uh, from neighbors is that, uh, the idea was to enhance the, the front of the building and keep it in a residential, uh, character. Any other questions or concerns?
Mr. Chairman, I have no further questions, Mr. Radzarek.
I, I have a question.
Go ahead, Mr. Brown.
Uh, the, um, utility room, which you said the furnace is in, connect. How is, uh, how is access gotten into that?
Um, access is, um, from a staircase, also from the same side, um, uh, as the, uh, if we can go back to PB three. Um, on the side yard, um, DJ, if you could put your cursor, uh, on the, um, side entrance of the apartment. Uh, that's the staircase, come down the sheet. That landing is where you enter the apartment. Um, if you were to continue along the side of the house, there's another door that accesses the steps that go down to the basement.
So that, that goes underneath the landing?
No, uh, no, you come in from the side on grade, um, and you go downstairs a- and then there's, um, a, um, a room, a, a, kind of a, um, a vestibule room before you go through another door and go to the left and into the basement.
And, frankly, what's the height of the ceiling down there? And it's a full, it's a full room underneath?
Yes, full room, the height is around nine feet high. But like I said, it's entirely below grade, you know, there's no, uh, there's, uh, there's no chance for, uh, an egress window here, um, and, um, it's just used for equipment.
Any other questions, Board?
I have another question, Mr. Chairman. The, um, um, PB three, I'm looking at, you have, you see the electric panels for all the, for the two units and the common area are located in the garage?
Yes, that's right.
Okay, not in the individual unit itself?
That's right.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Mr. Brown.
Sorry, um, I just wanted to ask for clarity what the square foot was of that studio apartment?
Studio apartment is, um, five hundred and sixty-seven square feet.
Okay, and did you change it from a one-bedroom to a studio due to the square footage? Or what was the rationale behind that?
Yes, yes, it changed because, um, the minimum for a studio is five hundred and fifty, and
Okay.
we needed to meet that.
Alright, second question, and I might have to assert this and I grant that. Did you say that there was three utility meters going in?
Yes, um, with a, with a two-family house, um, uh, it's assumed that, um, at some point the owner might not live in the building, uh, but is still responsible for some common items, such as smoke detectors and, uh, um, and outdoor lighting. So, um, there has to be an additional meter for the owner to, uh, pay for those, uh, uh, to stay in operation, uh, whether he has tenants or not. Um, in this case, if the owner's going to live on the first floor, he'll be responsible for two of the electric services that are being provided, and the tenant upstairs will be, uh, responsible for the third.
Is there outdoor lighting to speak of?
Yes, um, on both, uh, the outside elevations and this floor plan, PB three, uh, we see that there are, um, lights over each garage door and over, over the entrance doors. And, um, even in the back, uh, where there's an entrance, a second entrance into the studio apartment, there's, uh, by code, uh, a, a light at each entrance.
Mr. Radzarek, are those existing lighting additions or are they?
Um, the, uh, they're going to be new light, lights over the garage doors, obviously, because that's an addition. Um, and, um, these, uh, these, a new light on the side, I believe there's one light, um, in the front now. These fixtures are going to be replaced with new, and, um, you know, they'll be of a residential, uh, type that, uh, that is not going to, um, impact neighbors on the side. And there'll be motion sensors, so they'll only go on, uh, when needed.
Another question for you, sir. Um, any, um, is there any other amenities here, a barbecue or anything like that for the multiple tenants that will live here? Or is it just parking?
Yeah, none of them were planned at, at this juncture. Um, there is a deck in the back, but, um, that's, um, nothing is planned, as far as I know. Um, that might be a question for Mr. Lee.
Okay, and the deck in the back is restricted to one unit's use or to both units' use?
Um, both can have access to it, the stairs, um, you know, there's, there's, I don't think there's a restriction, but again, I think that's, um, that's not a concern I, I address. That's really up to Mr. Lee, how he wants to manage.
But they both have access?
Yes.
Alright, um, and in your testimony, you mentioned at the very, very beginning that there was a plan to get the yard cleaned up. Um, you recall that?
Uh, yes.
Okay, the property's been held by Mr. Lee for five years. Was there some impediment that prevented that from happening until now?
I mean, on the ask side of Mr. Lee, I don't think I could answer that question, obviously.
I just thought there could have been an architectural reasoning, some, some construction issue or something. Alright, thank you.
Any other questions for the architect, Board?
Chairman, I have a question.
Go ahead, Mr. Brown.
Yes, alright, um, PB three and PB four, you show some kind of a roof in the rear, uh, southeast corner of the dwelling, right outside the new sleeping area, the new bedroom or studio room. But when you go to the elevation, PB six, there is no roof over the window outside that, um, bedroom or sleeping area. And I don't understand that.
So, um, every, um, every, you're right, that's, that's a good deal there. Um, the window on the first floor on the, uh, right side, um, shows, uh, um, the only window into the bedroom. And of course, every bedroom, uh, or studio space, uh, should have, um, an egress window. Uh, in this case, uh, because it's a studio and there's no door, it's possible that, that this wasn't needed. But when it was shown as a bedroom, um, prior, we needed to show a new window. Um, and presently, there's a block storage room, a masonry storage room in that location, which will be taken down, and, um, we still need it as a room below as, since it's the vestibule, uh, going into this mechanical room. So we'll have a roof at, uh, at, at, at just, uh, uh, eight inches off of the ground, um, covering that, and, um, and the window remained.
Listen, uh, so the roof that's shown on PB three is a roof that's eight inches off the ground?
Yes.
That is part of the entrance to the basement?
Yes.
Okay, now I understand, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Other questions for the architect?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, I, I have a question for the architect.
Go ahead.
Yes, good evening, um, the, uh, referring again to PB three, um, I guess, uh, one of the questions I have, I, I have two questions. Um, the question I have is, was there ever, to your knowledge, has there ever been access from the second floor directly into the first floor, from the interior?
My, 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 no, not ever.
Okay, so it, it looks like, um, both in your drawings and to your knowledge, the first floor has always been accessed from the exterior. It, it looks like from the garage.
From the garage?
Yes.
Okay. There was always access down the stairs and either directly out or, um, you know, with another side door into the garage that, um, possibly led into the downstairs.
Okay, thank you. Um, and then my next question, um, concerns the garage. Now, in the rendering of the proposed, uh, one, well, first of all, the one-bedroom apartment, um, can you give, it looks like the dimensions are approximately, um, nine by ten. Um, I know there's some odd inches there, but about nine by ten, right?
Okay.
Um, and then, and so, so which is ninety square feet, obviously, and then about two of that, two feet is taken up by a closet and storage. So the living or the sleeping area is actually probably about seven by ten, approximately?
No, the nine-foot floor is a clear distance up to the closets, and then the closets are another two feet deep.
Okay, alright, so I misunderstood that on your drawing. So the, the sleeping area does, is inclusive, inclusive of the entire nine feet?
Yes.
Okay, and then the other length would be approximately ten feet, a little over ten feet?
Ten foot nine, almost eleven feet.
Right, okay. Um, and then my last question, um, going back to the garage, um, in the rendering here, it appears, um, that the two cars that are parked in there, there's, when you're pulling in, there's very little room for air there. It looks like the cars, literally, the length of the cars that is fit almost exactly in the garage, um, with, with very little clearance there, maybe about a foot to the door. Um, and so, I'm wondering, the wall that separates the garage from the one, proposed one-bedroom, would that be a drywall or is that a, a more solid wall? Because I'm thinking that if there was any air or somebody pulling into the garage, they could come literally right through that wall.
Well, um, there is a little bit more room than what you did describe. Um, yes, the, uh, this, uh, this, uh, the carton of the car is about one foot from the garage door, um, but there's about three feet more, uh, at the front of the car before you, uh, make it up to the drywall.
Okay, so I, I, yeah, now that I'm looking at your drawing, I see where the wall is, is actually further back from what I was thinking in terms of drawing here. So there's, there's a three-foot clearance there from, from the end of the car, the, the front of the car to the wall?
Yes.
Okay, alright, that answers my question, thank you.
I have a question again, based on, um, this, this most recent conversation. So, did I hear you testify that it was never a one-family? Because I thought I heard the contrary with the owner. Was this not something that was made into a two-family four years prior to his purchase, as he said?
Um, can I let, uh, Mr. Lee answer that?
Uh, he was. Just, just, my, what, Mr. Brown, what specific dissonance of the architect are you referring to? Because I don't know what he said that would lead to your confusion.
Uh, he just said to his knowledge it was never a one-family just a few minutes ago. And they were asking, was there ever any entrance from?
I, I, I don't, I don't remember saying that, um, specifically. I was, uh, I was just addressing, you know, the arrangements of, of, of the different spaces.
Okay, and it's, uh, it's not a one-bedroom, it's a studio, but, um...
I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I have to go with Mr. Brown. I did hear something very similar when you answered, uh, uh...
Mr. Johnson.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Johnson. When you asked, Mr. Johnson, when he asked a question concerning that two-family, not, so if there was access ever from the garage, you said it always had been two separate entrances on the first floor, the second floor, implying that it never was, uh, a, a one-family, but it had always been two.
So, um, if you look over at, uh, on PB three, um, the demolition floor plan, um, you can see the, the arrangement of the, uh, premises when I first got involved and measured, uh, the space. And it was, uh, it was, although there were some oddball, uh, construction that was in process, uh, with a bathroom that hindered any car from going into the garage, um, you see that there was a kitchen and closet doors and a separation for this one unit from, from what was noted as the garage. So, in my experience, there was always two units here. And, uh, it doesn't look very original, um, to me, you know, to me. So, I don't know the history going back twenty or thirty years, certainly, uh, as to what, how the building was used.
So as an architect, you can't tell if it was renovated four years ago?
Uh, it was, it was under construction. There was a bathroom that you see on the demolition plan was in the middle of construction. It wasn't even completed. So the previous owner, uh, previous to Mr. Lee.
That's what I meant, prior to Mr. Lee, yeah.
But, yeah, was doing some work, um, but that, you know, it wasn't clear to me why they were putting in a second bathroom for the downstairs unit, uh, when it was so small. You know, it just, it, it, it baffled me as to what was going on in somebody's head, uh, for downstairs. Because you could see they, they were putting in, uh, two bathrooms back to back, um...
Okay, fine, uh, one last thing, uh, referencing the conversation you had with Mr. Johnson. So he was asking about the wall between the garage and the proposed, uh, studio unit?
Right.
If that were to be the bed eleventh, is, is that wall important to AMA? Is it supposed to be something beyond drywall? Is it supposed to be, I don't know, but, uh?
The requirement for that wall, yeah, the requirement for that wall is that it be a, uh, one-hour fire-rated wall and, uh, not lead into, directly into a bedroom. Um, so, uh, yes, that wall will be fire-rated, uh, but, uh...
Is it a bedroom, though, because it's a studio?
No, it's, it leads into a, a common room, living room area. So, um, you know, it's, uh, it's, it's very common.
You're differentiating the living room area from the bedding area because it's a studio?
Um, there's, you know, it's, it's, um, we're, we're calling it, uh, a living room. It's, it's separated by, uh, uh, a number of feet from the sleeping area, and, um, there's, there's windows and, uh, air conditioning, you know, the, the air is conditioned. It's, uh, as far away as we could make it from the door.
Oh, I can see that, sir. I, you know the law better than I do in regard to the number of feet, but they would consider that not a bedroom for the purpose of this? They would, now it switches to a living area?
Right, yes.
Even though the bed is seven feet away?
Well, the bed is in the, um, the back room, um, farther than seven feet.
Okay, alright, I'm trying to, okay.
But, you know, a wall like this is, uh, very common, uh, a one-hour fire-rated drywall separating, uh, the... separating the garage from a living space.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Board?
I have a question, two questions. On PB3, on the demolition floor plan, the door coming in from the garage, right on the left, they have existing electric panel to remain. And the renovation first floor plan on the right, you said that the panels were going to be moved to the garage. Sean, could you comment on that?
The electric panel that's in the unit is a sub-panel. And the intent here is that there will be a complete separation. If that is the electric panel that caused some concern, then it would certainly be eliminated. But sometimes electricians just bring in power and then distribute it from a sub-panel within a unit. But if that, if that, if that sub-panel has any lines to the upstairs apartment, then that would get changed. It's possible that that sub-panel, if it services just the first floor, could remain in place and not cause any hardship to the tenant upstairs. But the, you know, the intent is to have three separate panels, completely separating upstairs from downstairs in the garage.
Also, do you comment on the drainage from the garage extension? In the front, if it's shown on PB4? You have a new aluminum gutter with downspouts tied to underground drainage system. Could you comment on that?
Actually, it's such a small shed roof. When we get into working drawings, we would, we would look further and see whether we even need a gutter. And, you know, if there's an underground system, we would tie into it. If there wasn't, we would just have gutters that lead to a splash block on grade. You know, we do have another round of drawings that would resolve some of the, you know, resolve that issue. But I truthfully can't recall whether there was an existing underground system or not. But I, you know, either water will be dropped down to grade or tied into the underground system if it exists.
Thank you.
Is there any member of the public who has a question for the architect?
Yes, this is Joy Harris, 381 Oak Avenue.
Go ahead and ask your question.
You mentioned that the plans include a revision for the deck, and I understand that correctly.
Could you repeat your question, please?
Do your plans include any revisions to the backyard and existing deck?
There will be, in the next round of drawings, some notes that just are in general saying that if there's anything that's deteriorated or damaged, that that would get repaired during this construction. But no change in shape was planned or...
Okay, thank you. My next question is, will there be any modifications to the second floor or top floor fire escape to ensure safety and that it's up to speed?
That was, that was not addressed in any way. It was not, it was not assumed it was a problem. And it is, is an additional means of egress that we're not, we weren't doing any work on the second floor and had no plan to do anything to that. It's, I believe, a metal stair now. And I just, I did not evaluate it.
Okay, thank you. My next question is, as you talk about the renovations that are planning, being planned for the size of the property, do the improvements being made include repairing the gutters for proper drainage? Because they're on the second floor, Eve. Those are causing, I'm assuming, some issues, or they're not attached to that?
Again, I didn't, if, you know, if Mr. Lee had any other maintenance issues that he thinks need to be addressed, we could certainly put them on the drawings.
And then do your drawings ensure that there's no runoff or water issues occurring to my property at the 381 side? So, nothing to change the way the water flows?
Nothing being done to the existing roof that's covering the second story. The roof that's getting changed over the storage shed is of the same size. And the only additional roof runoff is going to be taking, you know, is actually going to be taking up some of the driveway. So, there's no, not much, if any, additional impervious coverage. And the water from the front addition would be leading towards the street. Because I think, I believe that's the pitch of the driveway now. So, to my knowledge, there shouldn't be any effect to the size of the structure due to anything we're doing.
Okay, great, thank you. Now, the next question is, will the expansion of the property to a two-family home include on that left side of the home, the appropriate privacy fencing? Is that included in the plan?
None was being addressed in the architectural plans, but, you know, you can address that with Mr. Lee, I think.
Okay. And then my final question is related to, actually, my second-to-last question, related to plumbing. Are there going to be any improvements in the interior plumbing for the second floor that would support flushing with toilet paper?
There's no, no improvements being done to the second floor at all.
Okay. Alright, and then my final question is, how long do they, how long do you estimate that these changes will take place? And perhaps you don't know that as the architect and not the construction person, but I'll ask it anyway.
Well, you know, construction like this, depending how aggressively it's tackled, could take a couple of months and could last six months, but it shouldn't last more than that.
Alright, thank you. No other questions?
Chairman, Mr. Williams has his hand raised for questions.
Go ahead, Mr. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I didn't mean to interrupt the public portion, but I neglected to ask Mr. Azra, just to, and I know Mr. Ricci is going to address the FAR, but, Mr. Azra, could you just go through what the floor area ratio is, what's proposed for the board?
Can I leave it up to Mr. Ricci? George, you will let the planner discuss that.
Okay, sir.
Okay.
Any other questions for the architect? Anyone? Chairman Delwin, thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to call E.J. Ricci.
Mr. Ricci, raise your hand. Do you swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Just state your name for the record, please.
My name is Thomas Ricci, that's spelled R.I.C.C.I.
Thank you.
Mr. Ricci, would you review your licensing and qualification?
Yes, absolutely. So, I'm a professional planner at Stonefield Engineering Design. Our office is headquartered at 92 Park Ave in Rutherford, New Jersey. I have a master's degree in city and regional planning from Rutgers University. I am a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey. I am also a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners. All of my licenses are current and infant standing.
And you testified before planning boards and zoning boards and then accepted as an expert?
Yes, I have.
In the field of planning?
As a trainer.
Mr. Chairman, I submit that Mr. Ricci is an expert in the field of planning.
Any discussion, Board? The board accepts Mr. Ricci as an expert in planning.
Mr. Ricci, what was the scope of the preparation for this presentation?
Sure, so, in the preparation of this hearing, I have reviewed the township zoning warnings, zoning map, and a F kind document. I have also reviewed the architectural plans, as we saw before. I have reviewed the township's planning and engineering review letters. I have also visited the project site and the surrounding neighborhood.
And would you please discuss that site from a planning standpoint?
Absolutely. So, I'm going to share my screen once again, just so visually we can make this a little bit simpler for everyone to see. Confirm, please, that you can see my screen right now?
Yes.
Excellent. Alright, so, the site is located here in yellow. As you can see on the screen, you have an aerial image of, you know, the surrounding neighborhood. The subject site consists of one interior lot, frontage on Browton Avenue. The lot is slightly undersized. Five thousand square feet generally are the minimum lot size in this area. We are four thousand eighty-five square feet. It's kind of oddly shaped due to the way it angles on Browton Avenue. The site is located in the R1A single-family zoning district. As you can see, it's on the edge of the zoning district, adjacent to the R1B zone across the street, which permits single-family as well, but a higher-density single-family.
Can we, we're going to mark that as A1? I'm sorry, A2, I apologize, A2.
So, on the second sheet of the exhibit, further discussing surrounding land uses, it is predominantly single-family in this area. But as you can see, across the street in the R1B zone, there are a number of two-family dwellings. Everything that you see here outlined in orange is a not-single-family land use. So, it's, you know, the area along Browton is somewhat mixed between single-family, two-family, and then this adjacent corner is actually a four-family dwelling.
Mark this, I, or is this an entire packet?
This is a two-page exhibit.
Okay, so we'll make it the whole exhibit A2, two pages.
Mr. Ricci, would you discuss that the files will be for the board?
Absolutely. So, as previously discussed, the applicant is seeking approval for an existing two-family in a single-family zone. The applicant, you know, had purchased the property, as we said. It had already been converted as a two-family. You know, that the first floor had not been occupied with the intent of the applicant to receive the proper approvals before, you know, bringing another tenant in there and getting, you know, before getting that two-family dwelling approval. In addition to the two-family dwelling approval, as the architect discussed, there is a garage expansion in order to allow both cars to be able to pull inside for each unit. And in addition to the garage addition, there is various lighting, landscaping, and facade improvements to improve the overall look of the site.
Would you review the D variances with regard to the justification, which in your opinion allows the board to approve this application?
Yeah, sure. So, we are seeking a D1 use variance for the two-family dwelling being located in a single-family residential zone. We are also seeking a D4 FAR variance, where the maximum permitted is point five, and point five four-six is proposed. With regards to suitability of the site for the proposed use of a two-family dwelling, I do want to talk a little bit about, you know, where the site is located in the context of the zone and along Browton Ave. So, we are located adjacent to the R1B zone. Although these are both single-family zones, like I discussed, the land use pattern in this area is changing and it is located on the edge. Generally, in zoning districts, when you have, you know, a lot that's located, you know, adjacent to a zoning district, it creates this, it's kind of located in this transitional zone between a lower-density zone and a higher-density zone. So, if there are areas that do, are able to accommodate a higher intensity of use, it is the, you know, the areas adjacent to higher-density residential. We are also located fronting Browton Ave. The New Jersey Department of Transportation classifies this roadway as an urban minor arterial roadway. Minor arterial roadways generally carry more traffic than your typical, you know, local road or, you know, side streets as we know them. Urban material, urban minor arterial roadways, it's common for them to have non-single-family uses located along them. And then I want to flip also again to Sheet 2. As I discussed before, the location of the site proximate to other non-single-family uses kind of shows that, you know, this neighborhood may be diverging from this single-family land use pattern and, you know, starting to become more two-family based on, you know, the needs of the community and what people really are, you know, redeveloping their properties as. I do want to touch also, I want to talk about the FAR. So, as I stated before, we are seeking an FAR variance, point five is permitted, and point five four-six is proposed. This is a result, as I said, of the undersized lot. If our lot was five thousand square feet, the minimum lot size for the zone, we would actually be compliant. We would be under that point five. So, a result of the lot, you know, being undersized. With the result of the, you know, the increase of the floor area, the applicant is proposing a second dwelling unit, but, you know, no impacts are anticipated for this area, specifically with regards to density. Because they are only proposing a ground-floor studio bedroom and an upper-level two-bedroom, there will actually be the same, if not less, of the total amount of people on the lot. Because normally, if you have a single-family home, there's generally, you know, four or five people located in the home. But, you know, having these two apartment units, there's probably going to be two or three people. So, you actually decrease density by, you know, by increasing the FAR and creating this second dwelling unit. With regards to the actual portion of the lot, of the floor area that's being increased, the garage, as the architect stated, the point of that addition is so that you can bump out the garage a little bit and then each unit will get its own parking space in addition to the spaces on the driveway. So, there will be four parking spaces located on-site. So, you know, I don't think that, you know, there's any issues with regards to FAR.
Describe the D1 and the D4 variance. Can you review the C variance?
Absolutely. So, according to the application, we are also seeking C variances, one for front yard setback, where twenty-five feet is required and sixteen feet is proposed. As I stated before, the lot is very oddly shaped. That is a result, the setback variance is a result of this, of the shape of the lot. When you've all set essentially this front lot line, it's only a right portion of the garage that's approaching in the front yard. If the lot was, you know, squared off, we wouldn't be seeking that setback. We are also seeking a C variance for the maximum building coverage. Twenty feet, the maximum twenty feet is permitted and thirty-two feet is proposed. This increase, you know, as to what's there now, the increase is minor in nature. I believe it is just for that garage addition. It's roughly eighty square feet. And it's actually, like I said, it's needed for those cars to fit. So, it's actually, you know, improving the site because it's providing parking for the tenants. We are also seeking a variance for the maximum lot coverage. Forty-five percent is permitted, whereas fifty percent is proposed. That is needed for, located in the side yard, it is for the tenant to be able to access that second unit via a new concrete sidewalk. So, basically, providing a, you know, a safe, clear entrance for that unit. With regards to these C variances and the D variances, I think that this project as a whole advances various purposes of the Mistful Land Use Law. I think that this project as a whole advances various purposes of the municipal land use law, specifically Purpose A, promote general health, safety, welfare, and morals. The applicant is proposing basically new housing options for a mix of people. You know, some people are renters, some people are buyers. So it's a different type of housing option that, you know, the community's gonna have access to. It promotes Purpose E of the MLUL, promote appropriate population densities. I think this is really a unique opportunity to have a different type of housing without actually increasing the population density. As I stated before, a single-family zone, a single-family dwelling will likely have more people on the lot than these two units. So it's really, it's keeping or even reducing the population density, but it's a, it's just a different style of housing. It advances Purpose H, promote the free flow of traffic. Cars will be parked, as I stated, inside the garage and on the driveway. Therefore, they will not be circling, looking for on-street parking. So that minimizes any concerns for that. Purpose I, promote desirable visual environment. So, in addition to the garage addition, as the applicant discussed, there are various landscaping and lighting improvements that basically will overall, that will improve the overall look of the site.
You're kind of the positive criteria. Can you touch on the negative criteria?
Yes, absolutely. So, people variances will not cause substantial detriment to the public. Good. I think that the use, as I discussed, is compatible with this area. It's predominantly single-family. We do see a lot of these two-family dwellings. With regards to FAR, the increase of the garage is minor in nature. If you look at the scale and the massing of the building as a whole, it's generally maintained. As the architect discussed, there are no improvements anticipated for the sides and rear yards, which is where we are located, adjacent to the adjacent residences. So there's nothing anticipated there. Parking will be provided, as I stated, at least two spaces per unit on-site. So, you know, concerns for on-street parking will not be an issue. And with regards to the zoning ordinance and master plan, the zoning ordinance describes basically the R1A zone with the intent of maintaining existing development intensity and population densities. As I stated, you know, we are keeping the population density and/or reducing it. This is not a use that's trying to come in and develop and increase density in the area. We are generally maintaining that same density, just with a different style of housing. And then with regards to the area, as I stated, it is the same, you know, mass and scaling, and it's harmonious with the, with the surrounding land uses. So no impacts to the zone are anticipated. With regards to the master plan, I do want to go over some township goals. Township goal number one is to provide a balanced land use pattern that preserves residential neighborhoods. I do think that, you know, the fact that we are providing some balance, something different than a single-family home, people being able to get that, you know, apartment-style unit without increasing the density, we are fulfilling that goal because we are maintaining, you know, the residential character of this area. Housing goal number two is maintaining balance of housing options to meet the needs of all residents. I think this is important because, you know, while Bloomfield is predominantly single-family, we are providing rental, you know, housing options, whether it be the studio apartment or the two-bedroom, you know, for the different types of people, whether they want to come to Bloomfield and buy or rent. You know, the applicant is making that option available. Land use goal seven is to provide adequate parking for residential uses. As we discussed, the cars for each tenant will be located in the garage and also on the driveway. Parking will be provided. Off-street parking, on-street parking will not be a concern for this area. So, you know, I do believe that, you know, we are in compliance with the zoning ordinance and the master plan. No negative impacts to the public are anticipated. With regards to the C2 variances, I do think that the benefits substantially outweigh any potential detriments to the site. You know, I think that it is a unique opportunity to provide a different type of housing in this area. When looking down Browning, you know, the proposed building, the massing and scale is generally maintained. We are keeping or even reducing the population density. We're providing the, you know, the adequate parking for all units. So on-street parking won't be an issue. And then, like the applicant discussed, you know, the site is, the overall look of the site will be improved with lighting, landscaping, and other measures. So, that's all I have for my direct.
Mr. Chairman, I have no further questions of this witness.
Board, questions, please.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, if you will.
Go ahead.
Mr. Ritchie, I understand that, as you were saying, that by making this, if this is approved, this apartment being, you know, a two-family, and the studio apartment would decrease the intensity use of that area. But don't you think by making it a two-family that you are forcing the transition zone from a two-family zone, from a one-family zone, to a two-family zone? At the moment, without this two-family here, it is still a one-family zone. And if the purpose of the zoning is to have a one-family zone, by going to a two-family zone, you are in fact making it to a transition zone that at the moment it is not.
Right, and I agree with that point. And I think that, you know, zoning districts as a whole kind of change in nature over time. Nothing is set in stone about zoning based on the changing characteristics of maybe a town, of the market conditions. You know, zoning does change. I just think that from a compatibility standpoint, when looking around and seeing that there are many other two-family dwellings, our specific site, which is located proximate to those dwellings and located on Browning Ave, you know, will not impact the characteristics of these zones.
But?
Yes, I agree with your point.
The density, yes, I would agree. But when the town decided it wanted to make that zone a one-family zone or to remain a one-family zone, you may not know, but do you think the intent was to have the A transition zone? If not, why would they not have included it as part of the B2 zone?
Right, okay. Yeah, I agree, yes. That is a good point. I think the point that I was trying to make really was that, you know, if there were a site in the zone that could accommodate this type of use, it is, it would be a site that is located adjacent to a higher-density, a higher-density zone.
At currently, the, even as a one-family zone, it is not an adequate amount of space outside of the building due to the, you know, the undersize of the property. And again, as you had mentioned, this is the ways, the proposed construction of it will kind of force it to remain less dense, you know, due to its size and due to the effect that this two-family house will make it less probable that you will have more people if it were a one-family house. But considering its size, and now that you will have two-family there, what about the space around the house, the home, that two-family people will need? Or are you, is the idea or the plan is just to have a, just, I don't know, a commuter-type home situation? In a one-family zone?
So I would believe that question could be directed towards the applicant. I'm not sure what type of tenants he's trying to attract. But I would imagine that, yes, this, you know, would make for an appropriate commuter home. You know, people want to, you know, they have a place to park. They live in, you know, this studio-style apartment, and then, you know, come to their, go to their jobs and then come home. But I can't speak on behalf of the applicant what type of tenants he's trying to attract.
Okay, alright, good enough. Thank you very much.
You got it.
Other questions, board?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Alright, and thank you. So, I'm gonna start with your question regarding your proposed positive criteria, Purpose Number One, visual improvement. So when I look at this, I think in terms of streetscape, setback, and as you said, you know, scale. And I'm concerned about the garage, which is, you know, extends that streetscape. Rowdown though already has, I think, in different parts of jagged streetscape, which doesn't, I think, improve the look and feel of that street. And I think that this upbutment further, you know, with the garage, doesn't enhance that. What, so that's, I'd like to see thoughts on that to start.
So it does, but, you know, so...
It does what? It does make it better or it does make it worse?
No, I think it makes it better because I think that, you know, the garage addition that we're proposing, and I wanted to make a note of this, that, you know, as the architects discussed, they are improving the front façade of the building. So, the overall look of the building, and I'm not talking about scale or massing, I'm just talking about piece-to-piece, will improve. The reason for that addition is so we can get those cars inside, and it's they're not parking basically on the street. So, the, you know, the argument that I made was that the benefits of having, you know, that garage addition significantly outweigh, you know, the problems that could be associated with overcrowding the streets with not being able to find parking.
Well, I would agree that the facade, or the, the architect made his argument that the facade would be improved, and I kept my questions, you know, the facade, directed to him for that. But for you, I'm saying in terms of setback, it's not creating an appealing setback. It's undermining and creating more of a ragged look on that street, which already suffers from that, from a planning point of view. Let me move on to my, you disagree with that?
I...
I understand that rationale for having additional parking.
Yeah.
Irrespective of parking, I'm talking about scale and streetscape. I'm talking about placemaking.
Right. I also want to make note of the shape of the lot. It is oddly shaped. So like I said, we don't, you know, we're kind of at a disadvantage when you look at the front setback of the building because the building is angled toward Browning Ave. So, you know, it's not that, the streetscape is not always jagged because people aren't pushing on the front setbacks. It's also due to, you know, the ways that those blocks along Browning Ave are angled into it.
Mm-hmm.
I just wanted to make note of that.
Thank you. So, that's a hypothetical, that by adding another unit, you're decreasing density, and that is your supposition.
Go ahead.
Are you also saying that you would never have more than one person in that studio unit? Because isn't it conceivable that a couple would live there? And is it not also conceivable that more than two people would live in the second unit upstairs? I mean, there's no reason to believe that there would be a reduction in density, which is your argument. At the very best, it would stay steady. But I don't see how you could convince someone that there wouldn't be more than one person or more than two people living on the second floor. People have babies, people have families, people seeking housing have all kinds of circumstances, relatives and whatnot that move in. So, would you at least concede that that's hypothetical? That it would reduce the density? I think that's contrary to planning law.
Would I agree that it's hypothetical that it would reduce density?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Do you?
Yes.
Okay.
I think it's hypothetical that it would reduce the density. Typically, in land development, studios are generally occupied by one person. Two-bedrooms are generally occupied by two people. Like you said, they may have a child, and that comes up to three, for a total of four on-site. It is also just this hypothetical, if you have a single-family zone, a single-family dwelling, that there's, I used four as a baseline, but there generally can be much more than that as well. I don't foresee, you know, two people being located in the ground-floor studio unit, given the size. It's typical that that would be occupied by one person. You're completely right that it is tough to forecast, but generally, it is one person in a studio and two people in a two-bedroom or three people in some situations.
Thank you. Continuing that hypothetical, do you argue there would be same or fewer cars? Or do you argue there would be the same or more cars? Because I don't know the regulations or the, I don't know what the planning
Right.
recommendations are, but what do they say for a single-family unit versus two units in terms of automobiles, bicycles, things like that?
So, I am not a traffic expert. I can't state on the record exactly what these bedrooms, what kind of parking demand they would require. I would state, though, we probably are increasing the cars. But that is why we made the, the applicant has made the attempt and, you know, has shown that he's providing parking in these two spaces for each unit. But, decreasing cars, I'm not sure about that.
So you're, you're saying it's likely there being increasing cars? Again, no one's can tell the future, but that's
Right.
what the planning would say.
Exactly, yeah.
And then, to the biggest issue here for me, the D1 use variance, and, you know, changing this into a two-family. You said more than one time that it was a predominantly residential, like, single-family residential neighborhood. I also noted with your map that there were multifamilies across the street in the other zone. From a planning perspective, what would be, I mean, is it not true? And what would be your opinion on the fact that when homeowners buy into a neighborhood, that, you know, there, along with master plan, that their understanding is that the neighborhood would stay in the same, the same way? That it would preserve their residential neighborhood? And that if someone bought into a home and suddenly two families are springing up, they might be disenfranchised? What's your position on that, from a master planning, master zoning point of view?
So, well, from a master, from the master plan point of view, I feel like, you know, as I stated for this use, the master plan for the city as a whole is providing, you know, a balanced land use pattern. With regards to the zone, the intent is really to, you know, maintain the development and population intensity, and I think we are fulfilling that. With regards to potentially purchasing a single-family home and having the expectation that, you know, your neighborhood would stay the same, I feel like that's kind of a subjective, you know, matter. You know, that would come down to the purchaser being able to do their due diligence on the area and also having an opinion on how that neighborhood would be changed. So I don't think I could speak on that behalf. But like I said, with regards to the zoning ordinance and the master plan, I do believe that, you know, we are, you know, in compliance with the intent.
Is it a slippery slope by putting in that multifamily, which is really the only one on that side? There's a hope, the proponderance forms on the other side, in the other zone, the two-zone. Is it a slippery slope by allowing this? Doesn't it open the door for more investors to want to? Because the applicant's an investor, he has more than one home that he's invested in. What do you say to the slippery slope?
So I think that each development application is very different. I think at the end of the day, obviously, the board has control over that. So it's not like, if, you know, as this, if this application were to be approved, then, you know, it starts happening everywhere. At the end of the day, the city, the board members have control over what happens. So each application needs to be looked at individually. I think in our individual application, I think we provide everything that's needed to make this an appropriate two-family conversion and fulfill some of these goals of the master plan, you know, with regards to, you know, what the applicant wants to do with the site and where we are located.
Thank you.
I see Mr. Wang has his hand up.
Yeah, thank you. I had a question, Mr. Ritchie, about, you had, it was also about the density, but I was curious about the number because it wasn't sitting well with me. You mentioned five, five persons would be for a single-family lot, and that that would not be different for a R2, if this were converted to a two-family. I'm just curious where that number is coming from in this context.
Okay, yeah. So I said four people from a conservative standpoint in a single-family dwelling. If this were a single-family dwelling, you would have three bedrooms. Generally, your typical family, you would have mom and dad in one bedroom, one child in another bedroom, and one child in the third bedroom. There are a total of four people on the lot. Is that...
Is that standard for planning? Or, I mean, just based on the statistics, I have a hand because I'm, this is from my own experience and also from what I've seen in the census. it's an average of two to three people per household. So is that, is that a planning number? Or is that a, is that a, is it based on, on actual numbers and, and statistics that we're using?
Right, so that is not based on the census. That is just something, um, that is based generally in the planning industry. Um, the Bloomfield area, especially along Brown and Avenue, um, some of these single family dwellings are higher density dwellings that can accommodate, you know, four people in a single family zone. But yes, that is like a planning industry, um, you know, standard.
Okay, thank you.
You got it.
I don't know if any members have any other questions, but I know George from Nishuane has his hand up.
I do have a, a quick question.
Oh.
On to the printer, please.
Okay.
Thanks. Um, yeah. You had mentioned, Mr. Ritchie, um, in your testimony that the Bloomfield master plan encourages and provides for a diversity of housing types, um, throughout the township. Um, do you think, is it your opinion that our, our current zones that we have throughout the township provide for a diversity already within the township?
Um, and do you, but from what I recall from the township zoning map, you have four single family zones and then one garden apartment zone, I believe. I don't believe there are solely, there, I don't believe that there are zones solely dedicated to two family dwellings. So it is sometimes difficult to achieve a wide variety of housing if you only have single family zoning districts and then areas that are just zone for large garden apartment developments. So that's why I was saying before, this, this is a unique opportunity to be able to provide these kind of diversified housing options to the town.
Okay, and then just to kind of further along with that, would you, would you tend to agree that an R one A zone is just one segment of that diversity?
Yes, absolutely.
And so that having a, an R one A zone for single family housing can be a benefit to a community? Because obviously there are people that desire those ones.
Yes, absolutely.
And thank you.
Uh, Mr. Ricky, you showed us an exhibit, um, showing on, on the applicant's side of the street, um, the R one A zone. And across the street, there was an R, uh, R one B zone. And you pointed out that there were a, a number of, quite a number of two family homes. And I believe you suggested that, that indicated that, uh, the residential character was moving in the direction of two family homes. Did I get that right?
Yes, along Brown.
Along Brown, correct. So, uh, the, the township council periodically commissions the planning board to create a master plan, revise a master plan, and they revisit this periodically. And then they enact the ordinance in the township that delineate zones. So when the township delineate, when the township council delineates a zone, uh, and this is the case in the R one B, uh, do they do that with the presumption that when they say it's an R one B zone, that do they presume that the, the two families will eventually become one family and they'll move into conformity with the ordinance? Or in fact, when they zone it as an R one B zone, is this with the presumption they're hoping that two family house conversions will be made? What, what's the presumption when, when the, what's there is different from what the ordinance zones it?
Um, I think the intent of the zoning, um, comes down essentially to the city. Um, I can't speak on behalf of the city council and what, what their intent was when they, when they zone these areas the way that they are. I don't want to say something that, you know, that doesn't agree with the intent of why they did what they did.
All right.
Does that make sense?
All right, thank you. Other questions, board? Anyone? Our experts have a question? Anywhere experts? Mr. Williams, go ahead.
I'm an expert, okay? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Mr. Ritchie, how are you this evening?
Good, good, Mr. Williams, how are you?
I'm well, good testimony, good testimony. I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Um, just to begin with, does this applica, does this application include a request for a density, a D five density variance?
No, it does not.
Okay. So when, and I know there's been a fair amount of conversation about your comments regarding density, is it fair to paraphrase? Well, is it fair to characterize your statement about density as talking about intensity as opposed to density perhaps?
Yes, correct.
I asked the question of the architect earlier, Mr. Azrak, about the F A R, he kind of deferred to you. Can you tell me what the existing floor area ratio is and what is proposed, please?
Um, so I, the proposed is point five or six. With the, regards to the existing, I would like to let the architect, uh, kind of touch on that. I believe it is point five two six, but I, I would like him to, to confirm.
I thought you might. What's the, um, what's the maximum?
Point five. So point five is permitted, point five two six exists, and point five four six is proposed.
Yes, that's it.
That's correct.
And the additional floor area ratio going from point five two six to point five four six is based upon what again? I mean, I think I know the answer, just for the record.
Uh, it's my impression that that's the existing garage. But I, once again, I would like the architect to confirm that.
Yes, that's how that was derived, the, uh, the, the extra eighty square feet of garage area.
Thanks, that's why I was asking you earlier, Mr. Azrak. I figured you'd be the man to ask about that. So thank you for that clarification.
Right. It only deflected to Tom because he's, uh, it is more of a planning issue.
Okay. Well, well, the relief is, but the dimensional part was really, I thought, you're, we got to where we need to be, so thank you for that.
Yep.
Back to Mr. Ritchie. Um, I'm just gonna stick with the D four for a moment and then I want to go to the D one. But since we're talking about the D four, Mr. Ritchie, is it your opinion that the site can accommodate the additional, um, floor area ratio going from point-
Yes, it is.
Covered this, but if you could just say one more time, why can accommodate the additional floor area ratio?
Right, so, so there's kind of two pieces to that. As I discussed, there's kind of a density standpoint. Um, there's not going to be, particularly when you increase floor area, means you increase, um, things happening on the lot, um, or people. But I want to make a point that we're not increasing the overall density of the lot. And then with regards to, you know, increasing the actual F A R, um, and providing that second unit, parking or anything like that won't be an issue. So they're cut to, you know, because the reason of the F A R increase is to provide parking for the tenants. So the site can accommodate basically from a population standpoint, from a parking standpoint, um, the increase in F A R.
Thank you, particularly for that latter part about the parking. So you're saying the site can, if I understood you correctly, the site can accommodate the increase that they are in specifically or in point of that, it can accommodate the required parking on site despite the increase in F A R. Is that, did I hear you correctly?
That's correct.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there a request? Do you have a request? Does the application include a request for a parking variance for deviation from the residential site improvement district?
I do not believe so. Um, if the architect could confirm based on the bedroom mix, but I don't believe we are requesting, um, an R S I S parking variance.
We are not.
No, we're not.
I heard a resounding "we are not" from Mr. Gesson and I assume that would be the answer, uh, Mr. Ritchie. So your testimony is the, even with the increase F A R, the site is compliant with the R S I S, is that correct? Correct. With the parking requirement with what I was referring to, Mr. Williams, I thought that was your question. Pardon parcel of parking in the R S I S. Uh, yes, yes, with the parking, correct.
If I could just add to that, the, uh, New Jersey Administration Code that we're talking about says that, um, uh, there's a table, four point four parking requirements for residential use. And, um, the guideline there is that for a two bedroom, um, unit, that, um, there'd be provided one point five, um, parking spaces uh, for a unit of that size. We have one of those, but we also have the smaller units. They don't give a guideline on a, you know, one bedroom or studio. Uh, but I think, you know, you can extrapolate, say even if, uh, even if it was given a one point five, um, uh, you know, the most that the, the state recommends is the re-parking spaces. So we're, we're providing, uh, four spaces here. So I think we more than meet the, uh, the, the guidelines that the state has to fulfill.
Thank you, Mr. Azrak. And again, I'm tying that to the F A R and perhaps even the dense, the D one. Uh, but it wasn't on the drawings that, uh, but I just wanted to make sure that information that you just provided was on the record, so I do appreciate that.
Sure.
Um, Mr. Ritchie, you can go to your exhibit for a second. And I think it was the second slide. And our chairman and a commissioner may have touched on this. I just want to ask a further question. While Mr. Ritchie's doing that, for a moment of levity, I'll say he is the only person I know that during a pandemic got rid of a beard instead of growing a beard, so.
What is that? I just, I almost just got kicked, I, I got kicked for a second.
I was, for a moment of levity, I was saying you're the only person I know that got rid of a beard during a pandemic instead of growing a beard, so.
That's correct. You got everyone's exchanges.
Yep, that's right, you're here. So looking at this exhibit, um, which I believe is the second sheet, just to kind of confirm what I thought I heard our, our board chairperson mention. Um, the exhibit does show, if I understood it correctly, a number of non-single family uses in the R one B. But based on your analysis and field observations, is it safe to say that the exhibit shows that there are no non-single family homes in the, this section of the R one A?
Yeah, that's it to say. There, we, we did not observe any, uh, non-single family zones in the district that provided.
Okay, all right. In terms of the D one use variance, um, I, I, I understood what you offered in terms of the purposes of zoning. Um, I, I think I understood your negative criteria. I want to, I have one question, I think, about, um, the first prong and the second prong. But in terms of the suitability of this site for the proposed two family home, just if you could, for the record again, say why you thought this site was particularly suitable for the proposed two family? And you may have-
Yeah, yeah, of course. So, so like I said, the, the location of this, um, particular parcel with regards to the zoning district that it is located in, it is up against a, a higher density, although a single family zone, but a higher density, um, zone. And then also it's frontage along Brown and Ave. Um, typically, um, these roads carry a lot more traffic than your, than your typical, um, side street where, where you kind of imagine single family homes to be located. So, you know, it's, it's, the site that, you know, its location on Brown and, um, you know, kind of lends itself to be able to accommodate something other than, um, single family. A lot of times you don't have single family uses along streets, um, like Brown and Ave due to the traffic, due to the noise, due to the, you know, increased traffic activity compared to the rest.
Okay, thank you.
Uh huh.
And last, that's the thing. Um, so your, your stated testimony is that if the board were to approve this application, there'd be no substantial reductions to the public good, which is a characteristic of the neighborhood. Could you just, yes, just give me, why that's your-
Big question to break after this. Yeah, of course. So, um, with regards to the building as a whole, as the architect discussed, the addition really only for the garage, the addition is only for the garage, roughly eighty square feet. The general, you know, scale and massing of the building is generally maintained. It's, you know, it's roughly the same size as the surrounding buildings. And then, you know, only that addition is taking place in the front. There are no, um, improvements besides the landscaping, which are, you know, positive improvements to the surrounding uses. There are no improvements or expansions in the sides or rear yards, which are the shared lot lines of the adjacent residences.
Thank you, and just to piggyback on that, sorry, I lied a little bit. Um, the fact that the studio entrance is located on the side and not the front, does that more inform your opinion about the impact of the two family on, in the, in this district?
Right, um, you know, I think that it, it, it does. The, the, you know, the, the tenant will be entering on the side, um, a different entrance than, you know, your normal front door of your, of the single family home. But I do think that, I think the applicant has shown there will be, you know, um, landscaping buffers and things of that nature and fencing to, to kind of screen, um, the person entering, you know, on the side. But I, I still think that, that won't be, you know, a substantial impact that will, you know, affect the, you know, adjacent residences to a right where, where that use would now become incompatible because the person, you know, is entering on the side.
So it would almost appear as a one family to a passerby because of the side entrance?
Right, exactly.
But last question, I promised this time. Um, a question was asked by a commissioner about landscaping to buffer the utilities on the other side of the house. So that is the side opposite the studio entrance way. Do you have any opinions about whether that would be an acceptable condition if the board were inclined to approve this application?
Um, I would have to check with the client, but I would imagine, yes, that would be something that, that we can definitely provide if, you know, the board is metable to approve the application, for sure.
Thank you, Mr. Ritchie. I, I have no further questions. Good job, Mr. Ritchie. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Uh, does any member of the public have a question for Mr. Ritchie?
Yes, Joy Harris, for Radio Oakwood Avenue. Mr. Ritchie, my question to you is, I've heard your testimony about the, uh, improvements for the community and for consistency in the population density. My question to you is, your test, has your testimony been based on your expertise as well as direct confirmation on how the property has already been used and will be used by the applicant?
My, my testimony has been based on, uh, my expertise. Generally, you know, when receiving an approval, um, such as the one we're seeking tonight and improve, providing these improvements to the site, it does, you know, oh, enhance the overall look of the neighborhood when sites are enhanced with, you know, lighting and landscaping and, you know, new facade improvements. So that is me speaking from my expertise.
Thank you, no further questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, board? Anyone? No, thank you, Mr. Ritchie.
I have a couple of redirect if I could.
Uh, go ahead, Mr. Gesson.
Mr. Ritchie, is the addition of the four foot frontage area that increased the size of the garage to allow cars to be parked within that garage a significant positive to reduce the intensity of proposed uses of this property?
To reduce the intensity of the, I'm sorry-
By how cars parked inside?
Right. I'm sorry, it cut out a little bit, I apologize.
Is the increase of the garage size by four feet a good use of that property by making it more attractive and reducing the intensity of use by having two vehicles parked inside?
Yes, absolutely.
And faced with the fact that this property was either any legal to or used as a mother, daughter, whichever the case may be, the records, I believe, of the town show illegal to- whichever the case may be, the records, I believe, of the town show illegal to, and the next-door neighbor talked about mother-daughter, is this proposed use of an efficiency a proper use to try to resolve the current physical shape of that house?
Yes, it is.
And you talked about the setback and the fact that the house is on an angle because of the shape of the street. Is that setback consistent with the setbacks of the homes in the area?
Yes, it is. It's very similar.
And I will be like George Williams, one last question. One of the board members talked about the average person per household. Was he referring to just one family's or is that statistic based on all types of households, including efficiencies and one-bedroom apartments? To your knowledge?
To my knowledge, I can't say where that, where those statistics were from. I did not, I was not the one that taped that.
Well, let's go a step further. If it had an average of two and a half, I think the board member said, would you expect that has to do with standard one-family homes or other buildings, other apartments, other units?
I'm sorry, can you, can you repeat that?
What would you think, I'll change the direction. What would you think the average number of residents would be in a standard one-family home with a typical three or four bedrooms?
Four people.
At least four, would it not?
At least four, potentially five.
I have no further questions, too.
All right, Mr. Ritchie, I have to make a, make a follow-up question to the discussion that I just heard. And the, the argument for, for the garage, as I understand it, is that with the garage and the two spaces in front of the garage, that we can accommodate four cars on the property to suit the two-family of proposed use. If in fact this was retained as a one-family use, would there not only be a requirement for parking two cars on the property? And therefore, would they not both be able to park in the garage rather than two on the, in the garage and two on the front lawn?
Yes, that is correct. If you just add a, you know, your, your single-family dwelling, they would just both be able to park in the garage if.
All right.
If the garage addition were to be approved. Because cars, I don't think at this current state will fit.
And just for the record, Mr. Chairman, I don't think they fit as it is now.
Yeah.
Well, they certainly don't sit with a, with a, with an unpermitted bathroom in the garage. I agree with that. Other questions for the planner, please?
Yeah, just, just for the record, when I, I'm looking at the 2010 census for, for the township of Bloomfield, and it's saying that the average household size for all households, apartments and houses, is 2.54. The average family in Bloomfield, which would be a, presumably a single-family, would be 3.2.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. That, that was basically my point.
All right, thank you, Mr. Johnson. Any other questions for the planner, please?
One more question, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
So just to clarify further, I think I just heard Mr. Gassian suppose if there were four bedrooms in that house, how many people would live there? To be clear, there are only two bedrooms in that house. Is that not right in its current status?
My question had to do with typical three or four bedroom one-family house. I wasn't talking about this particular house.
For this particular house, how many bedrooms are there in its single-family status?
I am not a witness, but I would expect that if there were to be a single-family home, it would be changed dramatically as opposed to what is there now because it was used obviously illegally or as a mother-daughter. I don't think someone would leave it the same way.
Well, I'm sort of, I'll have to go back to the architect because I think it does appear to me that it's a two-bedroom house. So I want to propose, I want to make some difference based on a four-bedroom house.
You're talking about the bedrooms on the second floor? You're not referring to the first floor?
No, I think that first floor, a single-family house, would be possibly a bedroom or possibly a family room. It's not a large footprint. We've all heard, heard footage of Spark under it.
Okay, this is the time, excuse me, excuse me, this is the time, time for questions for the planner, please, not for Mr. Gassian.
Correct.
He's not, he's not a witness.
I didn't mean to.
That's all right.
Thank you.
That's all right. Questions for the planner, please?
For the planner, it is a, you just spoke at length with Mr. Gassian about the benefit of having that bump out with the garage to accommodate additional parking. I heard you say that it wouldn't be necessary if it wasn't confirmed as a two-family. Is it, you also said that it was conforming to the look of that street. Is from a planning perspective, is it beneficial to have a less conforming street state that to make it even, you know, have one more element that's protruding into the street?
Well, I, I don't.
Where it is?
I apologize. So I, I don't think that, you know, that it's going to, you know, impact the overall look of the street. I do think that, you know, the benefit of having the garage is, is going to be something that, you know, substantially outweighs any detriments to the neighborhood, if any. And I think, like I said, the general characteristic when looking down Browman will still be maintained. I think it's a big benefit to, to have that, to have the, you know, to have the expansion and be able to provide parking for the tenants. And nothing, I don't believe anything is protruding into the street.
Well, I didn't mean the street, I meant the front yard setback. So last question for you, sir, from me, at this point anyway, is, with the caveat, there are, oh, these could be more seconds, I'm just teasing. The last question for me is, do you think that adding this two-family into this R1A zone improves the property values of the neighboring homes from a planning point of view?
So, yeah, I don't want to speak from a financial aspect of the property, but generally, yes, when you do, you know, if we were to get approved tonight and the applicant does move forward and make these, you know, these, you know, aesthetic improvements, it does improve the overall look of the neighborhood, which generally does help to increase property values over time. The neighborhood is more, you know, aesthetic and, 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 you know, the overall look has been improved, yes.
We did, here is saying that the architect was going to improve lighting, I'm quoting you here, landscaping and fencing. I thought I also heard that the fencing wasn't included in the plan from the architect. Maybe that's something to rediscuss.
Maybe I misspoke. There is an existing fence. I didn't know if that was, it's either being maintained or it's being replaced. It might be, it might be just maintained, so the fencing will still exist. I might have missed that.
Okay. And just as a point of fact, the applicant's had this property for five years and hasn't improved landscaping, but I guess here's the opportunity for that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Anyone else, questions? Here are no one. Thank you, Mr. Ritchie.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have no further witness. My case is over.
All right.
Obviously, I'd like the opportunity to sum up.
Of course, Mr. Gassian, we never deny you the opportunity to sum up.
I'm just trying to figure out what else there is to say.
So, we will, we will hear from the board's experts and then we'll hear from the public. And then Mr. Gassian will have the opportunity to sum up. So if we could hear from Mr. Marucci. Mr. Ritchie, could you be sworn in, please?
Do you swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Just stating it for the record.
Anthony Marucci.
Thank you, Anthony.
Mr. Chairman and members of the board, my report on this application is dated July 16th, 2021. My report basically outlines the variances that are involved with the application. And it also includes the history that I have with the property. Most of the board members know that in addition to being the board's engineer, I'm also the zoning officer. So my history on this application goes back, it goes back to 2012 with the prior owner. And if you allow me a few minutes, I, without reading the report, I just want to give you a synopsis of, of the history as to how we got to this point today. Back in 2012, I received a complaint from the second-floor tenant at this location that they couldn't, when, when there was a power failure, they couldn't get to the downstairs where the electric panel was located in order to turn the circuit breakers back on. And so we questioned it. Mr. Ramos's name was mentioned, he's the building inspector who's still employed with the town. He and I went to the site and that's when we discovered that the former owner back in 2012 or prior to that had converted this single-family home into two units. On that ground floor per level, this was a raised ranch originally in construction with the garage and then with a family room behind it. And when we inspected it, there was a kitchen and a bathroom and a bedroom and, and also a second bathroom that was extended out into the garage area where you couldn't park a car in there anymore. You could just about fit a motorcycle where the garage was. And we explained to the property owner at the time that this was all illegal, there were no zoning or construction permits, there were no inspections done on any of those improvements, and that the applicant either had to remove them or go to the zoning board. To make a very long story short, the owner ended up in foreclosure and lost the property. I then communicated with a management company for a period of time and eventually the bank took the property over. Charles Housing LLC purchased the property from the bank and came in for a COO, or a certificate of continuing occupancy, and received a temporary one as a single-family home. And he was advised to, again, I had to remove those improvements or go to the zoning board. He did decide to go to the zoning, LLC did decide to go to the zoning board in 2017. They appeared before this board, I don't know how many of these members were in attendance at that time. The application started, there were a few issues that didn't complete, and it just kind of dragged on and fell apart. Then unfortunately, COVID happened. But as Mr. Lee explained, he was not allowed to rent that ground-floor apartment until he had received approval. And that's why it's still vacant and that, and now we're here today with this application before the board. In terms of engineering, there really are no engineering issues. It's all variances, so it's all planning. I do have a couple of recommendations if the board decides to approve the application. If you'll note in, in the Issuing Group's report, figure three on page five shows the front elevation of the dwelling. It shows the pavement that it actually expands, it extends from, from one wall to the other. In other words, it goes beyond the garage. And on the right-hand side, it's actually in a state of disrepair. My recommendation is that if the board approves the application, that, if, if the board approves the application, obviously they're going to extend the garages, but I would ask that the driveway be limited to the width of the garage and curb to eliminate, to eliminate that deterioration and also to landscape it appropriately in the, in the front on the side of the house there. And also, obviously, to obtain all the construction permits to, for all of the illegal fixtures and appliances that were installed. And that's all I have for engineering at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Marucci. Questions for Mr. Marucci, please, forward.
I have one question for Mr. Marucci.
Go ahead.
You said that when the property was purchased, they got a conditional, Charles LLC got a conditional COO.
I'm sorry.
Only just the question to you is that you stipulated that they couldn't have someone living there, but we did, you know, there was a tenant there until, I don't know, I don't want to misquote the, the testimony, but there was a tenant there and then they vacated, like they said, a year or two years or something like that, and then they vacated and it's been vacant since then. Did they not have to remove the tenant when they purchased the property from the bank? Because it was illegal at that point.
The answer is yes, there was a, they received a temporary COO just for closing purposes, but they were not allowed to rent that ground-floor unit.
Okay.
I believe Mr. Lee said it wasn't rented. If it was, I, again, I'll have to defer to Mr. Ramos, he was the inspector on it at that point, but this is the history of the property.
Okay, well, I'm just going by today's testimony. I heard that there was a renter there when he initially purchased it. So I just was clarifying from you that that was stipulated as not permitted?
There should not be any tenant on that ground floor.
Okay.
Any other questions for Mr. Ritchie? Does any member of the public have a question for Mr. Marucci?
I don't see any hands.
No.
I don't see any hands.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I was trying to ask something and I didn't realize I was muted. Yeah, Mr. Marucci, good evening. I think I heard in your testimony, and I can see on Google Maps, it looks like the driveway, as you stated, extends pretty much the entire width of the house currently. And I think I heard you say if this application were approved, that you would recommend actually decreasing the width of that driveway to extend, not beyond the width of the driveway of the garage.
That is correct. That's my recommendation.
Okay.
And the, the curve it so that you don't have that deterioration happen again.
Okay. And then the sidewalk which leads to the front door, would that be a parallel sidewalk adjacent to the driveway or leading from the driveway to the front door? Is that?
It would just lead from the driveway to the front door. It doesn't have to go all the way down, just, but just enough so that it walk from the driveway to the front door.
Okay, understood. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Marucci? Here are no one. Thank you, Mr. Marucci.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Mr. Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Raise your right hand. Do you swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I most certainly do.
State it for the record, please.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is George Willa Williams, representing the Issuing Group, which is headquartered at 105 Burrow Street, Suite Number Three, in Montclair.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Mr. Williams.
Thank you.
Give us the, give us the benefit of your analysis, please.
Certainly. So I, I would begin by saying I agree with the recitation of the release provided by both Counselor Gassian and repeated by Mr. Ritchie, the professional planner, the release including the D1 use variance for allowing or permitting a two-family home in a district that does not include two-family homes in permitted use amongst the permitted uses. Also, the floor area ratio, I heard testimony from the professionals about what the maximum permitted floor area ratio is, what the existing floor area ratio is, what the proposed floor area ratio is. There are a number of C variances. I would agree with the recitations of C variances as well. And you heard testimony from the applicant and their special that there is no park variance. That was my analysis also. Beginning with the D1 use variance, as this board knows, the applicant has a burden of proof to show the special reasons and the negative criteria. proof to show the special reasons and the negative criteria. The special reasons include the following, showing that the purposes of zoning have been advanced, the site is particularly suited for the proposed uses against two families, and in the case of the hardship, that's also a special reason. The negative criteria is, you know, no substantial detriment to the public good and no substantial impairment to the zoning. The master plan, both the reexamination report and 2002 report speak to the importance of observing the single-family district, and the applicant is looking for relief from that makes the case that in this particular instance, there'd be no substantial impairments to the zoning. But before I get to that, I would just offer a minor difference of opinion. The applicant put forth as part of their proofs for the D1 use variance that subsection H would be advanced, which is to encourage the location of designated transportation routes, which will promote the free flow of traffic while discouraging the location of such facilities and routes which result in congestion and like. So I think, in my, in my opinion, I do see subsection I being a purpose of zoning that would be advanced. In my opinion, beauty is definitely the eye beholder, but any improvement to this site would improve the visual environment. I just question subsection H. In terms of the detriment to the public good, we also look at the surrounding area, both in the subject zone and across the street. Mr. Marucci and the applicant are correct, there are a variety of land uses across the street in the other zone. But as Mr. Marucci testified, that in this zone, there are no eminent two- or other-family homes. The board has to be careful in considering whether this application should be permitted in that context. One of the observations we made, however, is that if this were to be approved, several conditions probably, we would recommend several conditions. We were also taken by the fact that the entrance for the studio would be from the side. So for all intents and purposes, the view from the street of this proposed development would present as a one-family. That's something certainly the board could take into consideration. In terms of conditions, you heard one recommended by Mr. Marucci, the narrowing of the driveway. Again, in my opinion, if the board were going to approve this application, that would be one step further in making the house present as a single-family and also improving the aesthetics. I would recommend further that if the board were considering approval, the screening of the utility meters on the elevation closer to the neighbor that's here this evening. In terms of the floor area ratio, the board knows that for A D four, the applicant has demonstrated that the site can accommodate the increase in FAR. In this application, the existing FAR is in excess of the maximum, and the applicant seeks to increase it slightly. In my opinion, that increase is indeed slight, and the trade-off is the ability to accommodate the two cars in a garage space, which has a benefit to the overall neighborhood. So I was actually comfortable with the increase of that FAR. What I grappled with most was the two-family home, but again, on the positive side, from the improvements that were mentioned by the applicant and the fact that the entrance for this studio would be on the side and not from the front, so it would present as a one-family. That is the extent of my testimony, only to concur with counsel who mentioned the 2010 census. As I look at the 2014 master plan reexamination report, while it doesn't include the 2010 decennial data, it does speak to average household size, sizes in Bloomfield. So I just want to say thank you for the 2010 decennial data. And that would conclude my testimony.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. I'll start off with a few questions for you. We heard testimony that one advantage of this proposal is to increase the choice of housing in the township and the type and diversity of the housing stock. And mention was made that we have a zone for one-family homes, in fact, there's two zones, and that there's zones for multifamily dwellings like garden apartments, but it was stated that there are no two-family zones existing in the township, and that this would offer up a two-family home for someone who owns such a home. To your knowledge and study of the master plan and zoning orders, are there any two-family zones in the township of Bloomfield?
There are. I would approach it from, if I understand your question correctly, two points. One, and I'm glad that you brought this up, Mr. Chairman, the current master plan reexamination is 2014, and there are no recommendations in the 2014 reexamination report to change this particular district or increase its, or change it from single-family to two-family. That's important, just to put on the record. As you know, our 2000 master plan was the last super comprehensive master plan, one of my favorite master plans, and it articulates the importance of preserving single-family districts in Bloomfield because there are other options in Bloomfield for other types of zoning. So while I understood where Mr. Marucci was going with that, I would share with the board that the master plan does recommend preserving the single-family character of the R1A district. My only caveat to that is I think this is a very unique build-out proposal where it would still present as a one-family. And in terms of, I think what Mr. Marucci was getting at, intensity as opposed to density, the intensity would not appear seemingly any greater than a single-family. So makes it kind of unique, in my opinion.
So to follow up, Mr. Williams, elsewhere in Bloomfield, are there currently two-family housing zones?
Yes. And I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I'm trying to repeat. The answer is yes. So the R1A, R1B, R2A, R2D, single and two-family residential zones.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Yes.
And the second question I have, this reference was made, as I stated before, in the R1B zone that's across Broton, there are a number of multifamily homes there in the one-family zone. And when the township, either in grade master plan, revisiting the master plan, or grade new ordinances that enact the master plan, and they make a one-family R1B zone, is it their presumption that the non-conformities, the multifamily houses eventually move into conformity with the zone, which is R1B? Or is the presumption the other way, that, well, make it R1B, but perhaps it'll piecemeal change into a two-family zone? What's the presumption when the existing doesn't agree with the recent zoning orders?
Excellent question, Mr. Chairman. This board will know from several recent applications that the presumption, the master plan does a couple of things. It sets forth a vision for development comprehensively throughout the township. And as I mentioned earlier, our 2000 master plan speaks particularly about observing the residential characters of a variety of our zoning districts. The presumption in the master plan, less articulated differently, is if it recommends that zone has to be a single-family despite the indicators of other non-single-family zones, that they will come into conformity with a single-family. It is not that the zone will expand. The purpose of the reexamination report, as this board knows, is to test those assumptions and determine if those assumptions are still valid or if the changes are significant enough to warrant a change in the zone district. And as I mentioned, my review of the most recent reexamination report does not speak to changing this section of the R1A zone district.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Board, other questions for Mr. Williams, please?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Go ahead, Mr. Williams.
Mr. Williams, I haven't heard any testimony from either Mr. Marucci or you about the relevance of the fact that this is an application to put a two-family house on a lot that is undersized for a one-family house. And how does that relate to the particular suitability argument or proofs that are necessary for a D1 variance? You're muted. You're muted.
Hi, yes. Would you like me to answer that?
I ask Mr. Williams.
Okay.
And can you repeat the question? You're asking that the undersized lot?
Yeah, I mean, this is an undersized lot for a single-family zone, and they're seeking to put a two-family dwelling on an undersized lot for a one-family zone. What relevance does that have to the particular suitability analysis?
It's a very good question. So the answer may be obvious but worth putting on the record, so I thank Mr. Williams for the query. If I understand Mr. Rubin correctly, the issue is if the lot is already undersized for a single-family permitted, build out. What's the significance for a proposed two-family? The significance is it is an intensification of the undersized lot. And so typically, we would not encourage the two-family on a lot that's already undersized.
Thank you. I have another question.
Thank you. Other questions, board, from Mr. Williams?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Williams, good evening. Just, we talked a bit about the presentation of the house to the street with regard to the character and the aesthetics and such, and the improved or the proposed improvements to the house. And my question to you would be, is it not possible that these same improvements could be done by retaining it as a single-family dwelling?
I would give you almost a similar answer to what I gave to Mr. Rubin. The answer is almost self-evident, yes. The answer is definitely 100% yes. I think Mr. Marucci made an interesting point about while this is definitely a two-family, that it almost presents like a one-family, and the intensity of the use is similar to a one-family. But in terms of the improvements, you are 1,000% correct.
Thank you.
Other questions, board? Does any member of the public have a question for Mr. Williams?
I don't see any hands.
I hear no one. I hear no one. Last call. Questions from Mr. Williams, anyone? Thank you very much, Mr. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and Commissioners.
All right. Now the time for the public to speak has come. If there's any member of the public who wishes to be sworn in to provide testimony, now is the time to do so. Please indicate if you wish to speak.
So that would be me. Again, Joy Harris, 381 Broton Avenue.
Okay. Ms. Harris, can you raise your right hand?
Be sworn in.
Do you swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Just one more time, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Joy Harris of 381 Broton Avenue.
Thank you, Ms. Harris.
And Ms. Harris, go ahead and make your statement, please.
I just want to thank you all for your time and your expertise, and I do not offer that same level of expertise. What I am offering you tonight is my opinion, being a long-term Bloomfield resident, same address for 49 years, familiar with many of the prior owners of this property that we're talking about tonight, and most disappointed in the most current owner of this property tonight. And I understand that you all are bringing that expertise to the table, but none of you can speak from my position, which is the neighbor of the adjacent property, and how a side entrance would impact sort of my livelihood and my ability to walk out and be free in my yard now having a new entrance on the side of the property. And I'd just like to read sort of a statement that sums up my frustration and my position about the variance that's being presented to you tonight. As a resident of Bloomfield, in my current residence for more than 40 years, I would like to clearly state that I am against expanding this property into a two-family unit. The owner does not maintain the property in a one-family state as it is. I expect that that will only get worse if the variance is approved. The property has continuously fallen below the standards of care for at least the last five years. It is in a constant slum state that makes an eyesore for neighboring residents, and even to this day, the neighbor has no regard for any adjacent property or the neighborhood. Only until we started having the agenda items for this particular property did this property owner cut the grass. The last time the grass had been cut was from June and August, which is unacceptable. And even when the owner does have the property maintained or the grass cut, the landscapers that he has are substandard. They leave flippings all over my property, and they make extra work for my housework. The owner has no regard for those who live on adjacent properties, and he does nothing to ensure that his tenants, who have pets, keep them from being a noise nuisance with loud, persistent barking around the clock, and they pick up, they never pick up after their dog when there are tenants. And I will share with you that if you believe there are no tenants now in that first-floor basement, you need to go do some due diligence because there are residents in that property now. However, when the residents are having dogs, they use the yard as a toilet. Each of the pet owners leaves feces in the yard to fester, and it creates a health hazard. It attracts rodents, and creates an awful repulsive smell. This prohibits me and other neighboring properties from enjoying fully our properties in the area. I can't even open my kitchen window due to hermitic odors. Over the years, I've spoken to the tenants of that property. I've even contacted Mr. Lee, and I have engaged the town on multiple violations and occasions. The owner continues to disregard the town's request. The tenants never behave responsibly. Their pets are often unlicensed, and they never keep their property clean. I ask for a responsible neighbor who cares for their property and will uphold the standards that all other adjacent properties are expected to and always do uphold, especially when we're paying more than $13,000 a year in property taxes. I ask that this variance is not approved. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Harris. Does anyone have a question for Ms. Harris? Does anyone have a question for Ms. Harris?
Can I say something?
You can ask her a question, that's all. You can't say anything.
Yeah, I, I just want to...
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. He cannot ask her questions. He's represented by counsel. He can only speak through counsel. He cannot directly ask witnesses' questions. He can only speak through counsel.
I have no questions of the witnesses.
All right.
But I would ask, Mr. Chairman, that based on how strong the testimony was with regard to the condition of this property and how disappointed I am about it, that you give my client an opportunity to defend himself?
Mr. Rubin, can you?
Hello, somebody?
Can't hear you, Mr. Rubin. You're on mute.
You're muted, like...
Trying. There you go. Yeah, I mean, the public hearing hasn't been closed yet, so I don't really see any reason why he doesn't have an opportunity to respond to any testimony that the public may have given.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Rubin. We'll hear from Mr. Lee. We'll hear from Mr. Lee, and remind Mr. Lee that he's still under oath.
Mr. Lee, please recall that you are under oath, and please note some very strong statements were made about how you have not taken care of your property. So, please give your answers and tell what you will do in the future if you have not properly taken care of it now.
Yes, during this pandemic, actually, as a property owner for a few properties, we have gone through a lot of difficulties dealing with the tenants. Many of the tenants don't pay rent, especially the previous tenants for this property. That person has a dog and didn't pay rent, but luckily he moved out. So, we do have a new tenant on the second floor, she is a single woman with no pets. So, and also for this proposed application, I am going to be the resident on the first floor, so I'll be living there myself. I will take care and watch the, the house myself and all the details. So, I think the situation will be drastically improved for whatever problem might have been before. So, I think, you know, approval for this, approval for this application will benefit the neighborhood, and also because I will be living there myself, I think, you know, things will be much different.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for allowing Mr. Lee to respond and defend himself.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Anyone have a question for Mr. Lee, or what you said?
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
All right, Mr. Lee, we've heard testimony that you have other tenants on the property. In the very beginning of this hearing, you spoke about having a tenant, you bought the property, you knew that it was not a two-family, that it was an illegal two-family, and you said that you had a tenant there for two and a half years, and then they moved out, and then there's been no one there since 2017, is that right?
No, he did not say he had a tenant there for two and a half years.
Right.
And may I just point out, before he testified, that based on what we've done in the courts, tenants, you don't get rid of an illegal tenant quickly. It takes a lot of time before the judges in the tenancy courts make a decision to evict a tenant, and then they don't get out, they have to go through a proceeding with the sheriff's office, again, very time-consuming. So, after he bought the property, if the tenant didn't leave voluntarily, and I do not know, it takes an extended period of time to evict a tenant.
Thank you, Mr. Gassian, I appreciate that, that's helpful. Mr. Lee, how long did your tenant remain there after you bought the property?
For one year on the first floor. So, she moved out in January of 2018. So, ever since, we never had a tenant in there.
January 18, okay.
Yes.
And so, you bought the property, what year?
Late 2016, I think you said, I remember what you said.
About 2016, yes.
Okay, a little more than a year. And has there been another tenant since that lady left?
No.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for Ms. Harris, if I could.
All right, Ms. Harris?
Yes, Ms. Harris, thank you very much for your testimony, I appreciate it. You've been on, you've been in your property, I think you said, for 49 years, which...
Yes.
Easily a very long history. Do you recall a time when that house was a single-family house, being used as a single-family?
Yes, the prior, the prior owner was a woman with her mother. One lady lived upstairs, Marty Coleman was her name, and her mother Betty, Betty, lived down in the efficiency.
Okay, and the driveway that was mentioned before, that is the entire width of the house, do you have any knowledge as to when that driveway was expanded, was widened?
I don't recall, I could have been a child, so I don't know.
Okay, all right, so it's not, it's not recent, in other words?
No, it is not.
Okay, and the last question I think that I have is that if this application were approved, and, you know, I have no idea right now which way the board might go, you had mentioned previously regarding fencing between your property and the applicant's property, would it be your recommendation that there be some privacy fencing put in? I think all that exists right now is a chain-link fence, is that correct?
That is correct, and that would be a request that I would have.
Okay, so you would want something, a more solid type fencing?
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Is there any other member of the public who wishes to be sworn in and provide testimony? Anyone?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I know I'm already sworn in, but I will, I will still encourage you that there are, there are still tenants with a dog today, so I'll just leave that there.
On the ground floor?
That's what it appears to me.
I see.
Again, I have to call Mr. Lee to respond, Mr. Lee.
Let me, can I respond?
Go ahead.
There's no, there's no tenants on the first floor, there's only a single woman on the second floor, is the current situation. So, I just, you know, there is no tenant on the first floor for three and a half years, more than three and a half years.
So, the only thing that I would say is that I suspect Mr. Lee doesn't know what's happening in this property, because he does not live there, but perhaps there is a woman who signed a lease, but there is a man with a dog living there, and there are never any lifeline upstairs.
I would say, you say like, is there a man in there? A man?
Yeah, a man.
Well, that's kind of criminal action, if anybody like a man lived there with a dog, I don't, I'm not aware, and I don't tell...
I, Mr. Chairman, and Mr. Lee, nothing further. Obviously, there's a difference of opinion between Ms. Harris and my client, whether or not somebody lives on that first floor. My client denies that there's anybody on the first floor.
All right, thank you. Is there any other member of the public who wishes to be sworn in to make a statement? Anyone else have anything to say before I close the public hearing?
I don't see anybody's hands up.
All right. Thank you all, the time for public hearing is closed, time for board discussion has begun.
Mr. Chairman, can I sum up, please?
You're, you're absolutely correct, Mr. Gassian, go ahead and sum up.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I first like to review the comments made in the last half hour or so. Ms. Harris has been there 49 years, obviously difference of opinion as to whether or not there's somebody on the first floor. I would think the zoning office would have checked, and if there was somebody, they would have reported. I think they do that on a regular basis. If this application is to be approved, then this clearly will be approved. The, my client says there's a single woman on the second floor, obviously he's under oath, he's telling the truth. As to the privacy fencing that's requested, my client will, and I will on his behalf, say that he will put the privacy fencing in should this application be approved. The testimony by Mr. Williams, he said the side entrance makes it present as a one-family, and I don't think it would be a problem for the next-door neighbor. The screening of the utility meter is acceptable to my client, the FAR change in the windows is only minor, and it only has to do with increasing the size of the garage to allow two vehicles to be in there. And obviously, this is a one-family zone, I understand that, but the purpose of this board is to allow variances in appropriate circumstances, and I certainly think this is appropriate circumstances. Mr. Marucci talked about the history, he knew as of 2012, this was an illegal two, and he was obviously trying to correct. So, there was an illegal tenant in there at the time of my client's purchase. The people who put the illegal tenant in presumptively didn't pay their mortgage, and there was a foreclosure. So, my client bought that property from the bank, and as we all know, if you're buying a foreclosed piece of property, it's unlikely it's going to be in good shape. There was a discussion about how long it took for this application to be presented, I wanted to make it clear that my office was not involved in that, we only became involved in the last eight or nine months. My client's testimony is there are no rentals in the last three and one-half years. And obviously, the conversion had taken place prior to my client's purchase, albeit illegally, but it was a two-family when he bought. He has not used it as a two-family, except for the first year after, and as I pointed out in this round, it takes an extended period of time to evict tenants, particularly right now, very difficult. The CFO, which was a conditional CFO, was issued at the time of the purchase, it allowed for my client to apply for the two-family, and he was slow in doing it, so he did not continue to have the tenant in there. The proposed mod expansion allows for the two cars to be parked, and there is landscaping improved, there's a facade improved. The aesthetics of this house will be dramatically improved if it is allowed to be changed. And now, one of the board members said, well, of course, you have it fixed as a one-family, but it's not so easy to fix it as a one-family without previous living, or it is a two. The amount of money that would be required probably is very extensive, we did put testimony in as to that, but I got it, be very extensive. So, there's little encouragement for him to spend that money, obviously, it's going to have the approval, then that money's got to be spent, and his property will look very good. The property's located on the edge of the zone, as testified due by my planner, and obviously, it could be considered a transitional piece of property. He pointed out, my planner, that 381 is not a typical residential street, it's a fairly made thoroughfare. It's classified as an urban minor arterial roadway, that's not a typical one-family street. One of the many things about this that justifies the variance. There are other two families in the area, obviously, they're across the street, they've been talked about, I know, but parking complies. The FAR, as I said, is only a small amount in violation, and again, there's a small amount pre-existing that violates, and a further small amount by the increase in the ground. The conversion to the two-family would probably have less residents, and that obviously is subject to opinion, than a normal one-family with three bedrooms. We're going to have a efficiency with one person most likely. Upstairs, right now, my client testified, there's wonder, I expect there will be more upstairs at some time, but right now, a single tenant. Again, we're looking for a studio and a one-bedroom. There's no basement usage here whatsoever. Any applications? The board's concerned what's going to happen with the basement, here, the utilities, that's all it's used. The setback issue is created by the shape of the property. The most of the bulk variances are pre-existing. The setback is also similar to those on the street. The coverage increases are minor, the use is somewhat compatible with the neighborhood, and will have an appearance of a one-family dwelling. It's going to have the same density as a single-family. I think the aesthetic improvement, the landscaping, the lighting, the new front facade are very, very important with regard to this piece of property, and again, you have to look at what my client acquired. He acquired a two-family, he's trying to do the best he can to utilize this property without interfering substantially with the zoning in the area. So, this is a good application, the proof has been clear, the testimony of my planner was excellent, he set forth all the reasons that allow this approval to be granted, both as to the D-variance, or the C1 and the C, the D1, the D4, and the C-variance, most of which are pre-existing, the minor increases have to do with improvement. The conditions being sought by Anthony Marucci would be acceptable to my client, obviously the condition that was asked for with regard to the fence, the adjacent property owner who's been there 49 years is also acceptable. I understand the board's taken extensive amount of hindrance in this application, I appreciate that, time and consideration, and allowing me some extra time to give a summation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gassian. And once again, the time for public hearing is closed, and the time for board discussion has begun. Who would like to leave the discussion, Board?
I'll be happy to leave the discussion.
Go ahead, Ms. Rubin.
I'd like to start with the fact that Ridgewood Avenue is an urban minor arterial road two, and it looks substantially different, or Ridgewood Avenue in Glen Ridge looks substantially different than Broken Avenue in Bloomfield, and I just point that out, because I keep hearing how it's an urban minor arterial road, just because it has that status, doesn't mean that we have to make concessions in the zoning regulations to allow any manner of, of changes. There is a benefit to having a zoning law, and it protects the rights of the property owners, it protects the long-term growth and health of the community, and it protects the property values of the entire area. I reject on its base that we should go forward with this D1 use variance. It is in defiance of the fact that there's a zoning map that says one side of the street is R1B and one is R1A. There are no, well, testimony today didn't show any two families in the R1A side of the street that this applicant is on. In terms of the positive criteria that they've put forth, I think it's speculative that it wouldn't decrease density, they changed their term after substantial testimony that they didn't mean density, they meant intensity. Either way, you're looking at a major, or you're looking at, there was testimony that it would be an increase in the traffic and the parking, which necessitates their, which was the triggering reason why they want to add more volume to their parking bay. So, we all know parking is a major issue, so that's something that isn't mitigated, that's a negative criteria. I think it harms all the property owners that are in the single-family area, I think it doesn't preserve the residential neighborhood as the zoning laws are intended to do, I think it would be absolutely contrary to our goal here, to allow every applicant that comes through to get a variance just because they asked for it, it's true, they're not far off the FAR variance. It's true, statistically speaking, that you could argue there's a minor density change from the studio plus a two-bedroom versus a single-family, but there's a substantial change in the way this property opens the door to a slippery slope, you're inviting every other applicant to come forward, it changes the character of that neighborhood, and I do think it's unsightly to have those garages, you know, there, I think it's up for it, that there've been challenges. The argument that the applicant bought the property as a two-family and therefore should be allowed to proceed is just not credible to me, I'm not persuaded, he was told that it was not an illegal two-family, he being Charles LLC, so, an investor bought this property, an investor that took on a risk that he would buy it and be able to do with it as he chose, it took five years, in that five years, we've seen no improvement in In that five years, we've seen no improvement in the landscaping. If there had been, we wouldn't have heard testimony from the neighbor, and we wouldn't have heard testimony from their own experts that they would be improving the look and the feel of the property because it hasn't happened. So I don't think that this property owner has demonstrated the level of commitment to the property by his own expert promising that if we give this to him, he'll be able to make it look nice. Well, he hasn't made it look nice. In terms of weighing one witness against another witness, one witness says there's no one living there, another witness says there is, almost immaterial to who you believe because I just think that the number-one thing is that we should not be allowing this D1 use variance. I personally felt that the neighbor was a very credible witness. But I think it's almost a moot point because we shouldn't be allowing the neighborhood to change just because one corporate entity bought a single-family unit. I don't know how many people on the board have lived in a small studio that I have, and 567 feet is about the size of the unit that I lived in for some time. It's small. The minimum amount of square footage that can be used as a studio in Bloomfield is 550 because just slightly, you know, into that range. If that is the size, it's eligible. But I don't know that it benefits the neighborhood by having it. And I'm just going to put a pin in it and say totally dissatisfied with this application. 100% not in favor. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Who else would like to speak?
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Go ahead, Mr. Prince.
Mr. Chairman, board members, I do have concerns about this property and about the transition zone that Ms. Brown spoke of and our planners, both planners as well, spoke about. On one hand, I do not want to see, as Ms. Brown said, this shifting over of the zones, especially when the town designated it as a one-family zone. I mean, there needs to be transition zones, you know, for difference in housing stock. But it also needs to be a borderline at some point, you know, for all zones. And I think... I feel as if this zone doesn't... Should maintain as we have not seen, as Ms. Brown pointed out. There are no testimony given of there being two-family houses in that zone. But the other problem I have that is that Mrs. Harris herself pointed out that for 49 years, as she recalls, it was used as a two-separate units, not necessarily a two-family, but there were two separate units, and for 49 years, there have been two separate entrances on this property. So in effect, it is already function as such. The applicant's promise and hope is that... Our hope is that he will maintain his promise and to Mrs. Harris and other neighbors' satisfaction the condition of the property if he does a renovation. So I am a little bit concerned about both of these issues, and I am... My desire is to maintain the one-family. But the use at the moment does concern me of having to force this. But Ms. Brown did make up a good point about the size of this unit. Mr. Lee may be willing himself to live in such a small unit, but an additional tenant or a new tenant at some point in time is not going to be forced to live in a very undersized unit, and it is something that some people are willing to do, you know, or willing to have it. Even cost and availability. On one hand, I, like I said, I'm torn. But considering the condition and the situation that the building or structure is in currently, I would be willing to go forward with it, you know, for the fact that it's... For 49 years has been in this sort of condition that Mr. Lee is hoping to improve, you know, albeit, you know, a little bit smaller and cramped for my taste. Be my position.
Thank you, Mr. Prince. Who else would like to speak?
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Mr. Balnicky here. I totally disagree with Mr. Prince's evaluation on this. I just totally give credit behind Ms. Brown. I totally agree with everything she's saying. And I think, you know, there are no other two families in this one-family zone. It is a one-family zone. The drawing line, Mr. Prince, is Brunton Avenue. And that's the way I see that our mayor and council want this to be.
And Mr. Chairman, I would like to add, you know, I agree with my colleague, Ms. Brown. Very good, very thoughtful comments, I thought that you made. Very cogent argument. I, you know, to kind of add to that argument, there was testimony provided that this is an undersized lot, you know, even for a single-family house. It's an undersized lot, and to increase the density from a single-family to a two-family is not furthering that cause. If anything, we're exacerbating the problem. And also, I was not convinced by the argument that, you know, converting this house back into a single-family house is going to be too expensive or any more expensive than converting it into a two-family house. You know, I think the expense can go either way. And, you know, wherever you have two zones that up against each other, obviously, you're going to have a change in density and a change in use. And, you know, it doesn't mean that we can't have two different densities across the street from each other. That happens, you know, in every municipality. So, you know, I think that, you know, in this particular case, there's a strong argument to be made in terms of preserving the current R1A zone and maintaining this as a single-family house.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Anyone else?
Some short remarks from you, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
What I would say... I would add on to this, and I agree with my colleagues, Ms. Brown, Mr. Johnson, and Mr. Balnicky. I think the applicant's planner stated that no applications are the same, and the council provided that this is a... A, you know, opportunity or this application makes sense. And I disagree with that. I think there might be an application that would work in this circumstance but it's against the zone. I just don't see this as that application. There may be circumstances that would apply for that. I just think this is a square peg in a rat hole that, you know, that being tried to put into the application it just doesn't work, in my opinion.
Thank you, Mr. Wanger. Anyone else? Anyone else have anything to say? Hearing no one else, I'll entertain a motion, please.
I'll make a motion.
Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion that this application be denied. And in doing so, I'd like to recommend or propose that the applicant, which is Charles LLC, an investing property owner, that they have to eliminate that bathroom that's in the garage so that parking property...
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. That's not in our purview.
That's not our purview?
No, it's not. Strangely, do we accept the application as presented tonight or not? That's what's changed. The other is enforcement issues that we're being with...
Bringing that to other people.
Building and zoning departments in the township hall.
Thank you.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Thanks for clarifying that. So I'm just going to say I propose to deny the application.
All right, thank you.
He's going to sell this property. It's going to be used as a two-family house. You mark my words.
I'll second it.
Mr. Balnicky, seconds. Call the board, please. Ms. Cassenza.
I'm getting there. Hold on. I was trying to write that in.
So, Mr. Chairman, yes? A reply of yes is indicating denial of the application.
Correct.
Okay. Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Prince?
No.
Mr. Balnicky?
Yes.
Ms. Wagner? Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
I'm so exhausted. And Ms. Nazarian?
Yes.
Okay. Oh, Chairman Majowski?
Yes. Application is denied.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, you know something that I don't know?
No. I was trying to write in Mr. Prince's no, trying to keep track of the yeses. I apologize.
It's your voice. Your voice gets in the way.
Speak deeper next time.
All right. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Okay.
It is 10:42.
Correct. So...
You're very good at telling times, Mr. Prince.
Let's wrap it up, baby.
It's my sole contribution to the evening.
All right. So we come to 10 Alden Terrace. And if the applicant's still with us, I would propose to the applicant that we adjourn this to the special meeting of October 20th because we certainly won't get through tonight.
No, we don't go after 11 o'clock.
So we have 11 o'clock curfew. We have 15 minutes to go. And we can adjourn to the special meeting of October 20th, in which case you'll be the only applicant.
Correct.
Or we can start now. We'll not finish, I can guarantee it.
Well, let me ask a couple of questions. One, will we have a full complement? Because the last couple of times, we haven't had a full complement, and that's why we had to adjourn this the first time.
I can never promise a full complement, ever.
Well, can we poll the board to see if there are people who will not be here so that we can make arrangement?
All right. Poll the board. Who will be here on the 20th, please, and poll.
Okay. Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Unlikely.
Mr. Prince?
Yes.
Mr. Balnicky?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Ms. Hilaire?
Yes.
Yes.
No, she's here. She was here. She came late.
Excuse me.
And Ms. Nazarian?
Most likely.
Okay. So that's...
Can I ask a point of clarification to the board attorney, please?
And I'm a yes, Ms. Cassenza.
Oh, I didn't say you, Chairman. I apologize.
Wait, but I'll try. If we start the hearing tonight with Mr. Johnson president, and he is not at that meeting, can he review the transcript from that meeting to vote on it?
You're not going to hold the vote for him to do that.
There's 15 minutes.
I only ask because we've adjourned this once before, and my client's getting married on Saturday, and they're going to be out of town for a bit. So, you know, that's the only reason I ask.
Does that mean that October 20th doesn't work for you?
I believe it does. My client will not be here, but I have professionals willing to testify on their behalf. So as long as the board is okay with my client's being out of the country on their honeymoon, I am more than happy to proceed.
Can I just... This is a application that involves floor area ratio because a garage, which is a side entrance garage, is going to be converted to living space.
That's correct.
We have heard quite a few of these applications in Bloomfield. I would suggest to you that... I'm not sure I worry all that much about seven people.
Fair enough. I appreciate that guidance. And as long as the board is okay with my client's not physically being present at the meeting to answer questions, I'm okay to proceed then on the 20th.
And how many do we have? What was the count, please?
I believe it was eight, but let me double-check. One, two, three, four, five, six... Oh, seven, and I saw...
No, I'm changing my answer. I don't think I am available. I'm not 100%. I have a meeting in the city. I can't promise.
Okay. So that gives us six. And I don't know about Ms. Tolliver. Let me finish.
We have the new member as well.
I'm trying to get that out. I need to find out if Ms. Tolliver will be there or Mr. Cabrera will be there.
Okay. So we'll proceed on the 20th, as the board indicates. And, you know, if we don't have a full complement, we would respect the request that we be first on the November agenda.
I can't promise you first on the November agenda. We have 224... Let me finish. We have 224 Broad Street, which has already started. That's supposed to be on the November agenda. And 65 Park Street, which has already started, which is adjourned to the November agenda. Those are two applications that are already in the process. So that's a battle that can happen between attorneys, board members, but we can't promise that.
On the other hand, we were deemed complete, I think, in June.
So were these other applications. You aren't the only one.
Look, I think we're going to be able to get this done on October 20th, so let's not go down this road at this point.
Sure. No problem. That's no problem. I appreciate that, Mr. Rubin, and so...
You'll be on the 20th, and I think that this is going to be something that we're going to be able to get through. Okay?
No problem. Thank you, Mr. Rubin. Appreciate the board's time. And we'll see you on the 20th.
Tell all the guys that this has taken so long and it's hard to get through tonight.
No, that's okay. These things happen. And we just respect the request of the chairman that it now can be made that no further public notices will be required and that this will be held at a special meeting on October 20th.
Yes, we have a special meeting scheduled for the October 20th. It appears that we may have six members. I cannot promise any particular number of members. However, I will say that if it's less than seven, we would entertain an adjournment if you wish to have an adjournment.
Thank you. I'll 20th, then, Mr. Chairman.
There's also a possibility there will be eight members. So I will find that out for everyone as quickly as I can, hopefully tomorrow.
All right. So I have a motion to adjourn 10 Alden Terrace.
Mr. Chairman, before you adjourn, can you please make that announcement on the no further public notice required?
That'll be part of this, if you just hang on.
Sorry, I apologize, Mr. Chairman.
That's all right. I have a motion to adjourn 10 Alden Terrace to the special meeting of Wednesday, October 20th at 7:00 p.m. with no further notice required.
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Balnicky moves it. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there any member of the public here regarding 10 Alden Terrace? I hear no one. This is the legal notice. No further notice is required. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed? Hearing no one opposed, 10 Alden Terrace is adjourned to October 20th at 7:00 p.m. And please, everybody knows it's a Wednesday night.
It's a special meeting. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Rubin, and appreciate your time.
You're welcome. Thank you. Anything other business tonight, board?
No.
Hearing no one, may I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll do that.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Balnicky moves it. Is there a second?
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Prince second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed? Hearing no one opposed, we are adjourned.
Have a good night, all.
Good night, everybody.